Ladies and gentlemen, please take your seats. Pursuant to applicable law and my determination that attendance by remote means is necessary because a fully in-person meeting is not practical. We will now have a roll call vote to establish quorum. Please note your yes or present response will be deemed a yes vote when this quorum call is used as a reference vote for later. Will the alderman please make sure, the ones that are remote, that your microphones are unmuted during the roll call vote? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Lasbada.
Present.
Alderman Hopkins.
Present.
Alderman Dow.
Here.
Alderman King. Alderman King is present. Alderman Hairston. Alderman Hairston is present. Alderman Sawyer.
Here.
Alderman Mitchell.
Present.
Alderman Harris.
Here.
Alderman Beal. Alderman Zlowski Garza.
Here.
Alderman Zlowski Garza is present. Alderman Thompson.
Present.
Alderman Thompson is present. Alderman Cardness.
Present.
Alderman Cardness is present. Alderman Quinn.
Here.
Alderman Burke. Alderman Burke is present. Alderman Lopez. Alderman Lopez is present. Alderman Coleman.
Present.
Alderman Coleman is present. Alderman Moore.
Present.
Alderman Moore is present. Alderman Curtis. Alderman O'Shea.
Here.
Alderman O'Shea is present. Alderman Taylor.
Here.
Alderman Taylor is present. Alderman Brookins.
Here.
Alderman Brookins is present. Alderman Rodriguez.
Present.
Alderman Rodriguez is present. Alderman Tavares. Alderman Tavares is present. Alderman Scott. Alderman Scott is present. Alderman Chicho Lopez.
Present.
Alderman Chicho Lopez is present. Alderman Maldonado.
Here.
Alderman Maldonado is present. Alderman Burnett.
Present.
Alderman Burnett is present. Alderman Irvin.
Present.
Alderman Irvin is present. Alderman Talafaro.
Present.
Alderman Talafaro is present. Alderman Raboyas.
Present, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Raboyas is present. Alderman Cardona.
Present.
Alderman Cardona is present. Alderman Wagispack.
Here.
Alderman Wagispack is present. Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez.
Present.
Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez is present. Alderman Austin.
Here.
Alderman Austin is present. Alderman Ramirez Rosa.
Present.
Alderman Ramirez Rosa is present. Alderman Vegas.
Present.
Alderman Vegas is present. Alderman Metz.
Here.
Alderman Metz is present. Alderman Spisato.
Next Spisato is here.
Alderman Spisato is present. Alderman Nugent.
Present.
Alderman Nugent is present. Alderman Vasquez. Alderman Vasquez. Alderman.
Present.
Alderman Napolitano. Alderman Napolitano is present. Alderman Riley.
Present.
Alderman Riley is present. Alderman Smith.
Present.
Alderman Smith is present. Alderman Tony.
Present.
Alderman Tony is present. Alderman Gardner. Alderman Gardner is present. Alderman Kaplan.
Present.
Alderman Kaplan is present. Alderman Martin.
Present.
Alderman Martin is present. Alderman Osterman. Alderman Osterman. Not here? Okay. Alderman Haddon.
Present.
Alderman Haddon is present. Alderman Silverstein.
Present.
Alderman Silverstein is present.
There are 48 members of the body that are present. We have a quorum. We will now have the Pledge of Allegiance, please rise. The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the flag for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and everlasting. Members, please remain standing for the invocation, which will be delivered by Pastor Lou Ramos, Lead Pastor at Storehouse Church, Chicago. Pastor Ramos, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor Lightfoot, all the great aldermen and alderwomen of our city, our amazing city clerk and friends who may be joining us. Let us pray. Thank you, Lord, for your protection during the pandemic and during these challenging times in our, in our city. Thank you for watching over all our young people, our children and families in our city, and just want to pray for three things: for divine wisdom, for the mayor, the aldermen's, and all those who are going to be involved in the continuation for the next half of this year of governing our city. Pray that together we would face on this violence and that we would join forces and make an impact. Pray for courage, that they would make the best decisions there for the greater good of the residents of Illinois, of Chicago, I should say, and to know that God is with all of you. And thirdly, for accountability, to know that every decision you make, I pray that God will give you wisdom, strength, and just understanding. So in the mighty name of Jesus, we pray a blessing over all of you. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor.
Surely.
Yes, the chair recognizes Alderman Austin.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to move for temporary suspensions of the rule where I may address the body.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Madam President. I have pondered and pondered and pondered. When I left yesterday, I went to my office and all I could do was pray, because greater is he that is in the world, and we allowed it to happen. But the word of God said, "Greater is he that is in me than he that is in the world." And we allowed the he in the world to take over all of us. We have more God in us than we have evil in the world. We should love and respect one another. I ain't got to hug, love you. But the Lord, well, the Lord said, "Love your enemy." And we are not enemies, but we disrespected. We disrespected one another. We used words that we would normally use. We shook fingers and talked to each other like we were all children to one another. That's not what we do in this body, because when we're out and we're speaking to schools and other avenues, we say, "This august body." Well, we lost that. We, we lost that. We got to come back to the respect that we all deserve. My husband said this one time in this council, "I ain't got to like you to do business with you." So, but we have to respect one another if we don't do anything else, because when you leave here, you want to have respect for your fellow men. And I mean, leave the world, not just this body, because one day we will stand in judgment for what we've done here. And God knows, Alderman Burke, you can turn your back and talk all that you like, but one day, one day, this is going to come to where we have children in here when we trying to show them how they can become what we are. We need to change this. Alderman Rabores asked when we were, the other day, he said, "Can't we all get along?" We should all get along. We have, we have a right to argue with one another. We have a right to disagree with one another, but we don't have a right to attack one another the way we did. Madam Mayor, I hope and pray that you follow the rules and the regulations of this body. Council members, follow the rules and regulations of this body. Respect the chair, just like we expect for the chair to respect us. Thank you so very much, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Austin. Do you have a, do you have a motion to resume the regular order of business?
I'm sorry. Yes, ma'am, I have a motion to go back into regular order of business.
And, Madam Clerk, can we report for the record that Alderman Osterman is here? At this time, public comment will begin.
The council will now begin the public comment period, which is limited to a maximum of 30 minutes. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. Speakers cannot yield or transfer their time to another speaker. Any written comments that have been submitted will be posted and made available for aldermatic review. The first speaker today is Mara Georges.
Good afternoon, Mayor Lightfoot, Clerk Valencia, distinguished members of the City Council, and all your respective staff. My name is Mara Georges, and I'm the managing partner of a WBE certified law firm here in the city called Georges and Sinowiki. As I am here today to urge you to vote yes on the nomination of Celia Mesa as the city's Corporation Council. As many of you know, I am in a unique position to talk about Celia's fitness for the position of Corporation Council. I hold the title of having been the longest-serving Corporation Council in the city's history, having occupied the position from May of 1999 until June 1st of 2011. When I first came to the Corporation Council's office, I met Celia Mesa. She was a young lawyer in the Municipal Prosecutions Division, where she prosecuted bad buildings and liquor license appeals and worked hand in hand with the aldermen and the administration and distinguished herself as a fine, hard-working young lawyer. She transferred to the Labor Division, where she continued her good work on behalf of the city, its officers, and all the aldermen. After she left the city, she went to the U.S. Attorney's Office and began a distinguished career as an Assistant U.S. Attorney. When she left there, she went in-house at Exelon as head of compliance for a major utility company. It was then that I reached out to her and asked her to return to the Law Department as one of my deputies. Celia acquiesced and became the Deputy of the Employment Litigation Division, where again she served with distinction, working hand in hand with the city and its elected officials to do what was best for the city of Chicago and to act within the city's interests and her ethical obligations. I know that some of you are concerned about the handling of a specific case, but what I can tell you from my own experience, because I've had some run-ins with this body where this body asked me to settle cases, I can tell you that Celia is committed to doing what is right for the city and at the same time making sure that she follows her ethical obligations. It takes two people to settle a case. Celia can't do it on her own. Opposing counsel has to be in agreement, and she's got to ensure that the, her fiduciary responsibilities to the city are upheld. Again, I urge you to vote in favor of Celia Mesa's appointment. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Georges, for your comments. Our next speaker is Mr. Eric Sexthal.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mayor, and all the distinguished aldermen and your staffs. My name is Minister Eric Sexton. I'm here on behalf of the ordinance to rename Lake Shore Drive. One thing that I want to express that I'm excited about, that has been over this discourse for this past year, is that many of our citizens in this city now know who Jean Baptiste Point Dusabo is. That hasn't been the case over the many times previous to make them aware of his accomplishments in this city, to give him the honor, do him for what he has brought to this city, this great city of Chicago that we love. So I wanted to talk about the fact that a lot of people are asking questions now, and a lot of people who were not enlightened to who he is now have went and found out who he, who he is and what he's accomplished, and now like, wow, this, this, this is amazing. This is excellence. And, and the thing that I find for all of us is that once we're enlightened, then we're able to move forward and now get past the biases and all of the things that hinder us from progressing. And so now a lot of things have happened now where people are aware, and now they, they acknowledge, wow, he's done something great. Now, in that, what we normally do when people do things that's great, of noteworthy, we reward them. We reward them because they, they've done something that was excellent. We do that for our kids. When we, everyone that's in this room that's been appointed to a position, well, you ran a race and, and you got, you, you won the race. And so that's been acknowledged. You were rewarded with the opportunity to represent a constituency. Well, he was the one that founded this city, established an excellent business in the city, and he should be rewarded for his excellence. So we're excited about seeing the renaming of Lake Shore Drive, because prior to Lake Shore Drive and prior to State Street and prior to the Magnificent Mile and prior to the Sears Tower and all the other things that we, we, we hold dear in the city, there was a Jean Baptiste Point Dusabo who started everything and founded everything, and he should be acknowledged for that in the way that would bring honor and glory to his name and also the recognition for the excellence that he's provided. So again, thank you guys for the opportunity to speak. I pray that, like the last person spoke, that we can all be unified and on one accord and push past whatever biases we might have so that we can reward excellence as we do with our children. Thank you. Have a wonderful day.
Thank you, Minister Sexton, for your comments. Our next speaker is Glenn Duval Petway.
Greetings, honorable council members and the Honorable Mayor Lori Lightfoot. My name is Glenn Duval Petway, known simply as Duval. I'm 59 years old, born and raised in Chicago's Inglewood. I'm a fashion designer and a custom suit maker. My claim to fame is my clients from President Mandela to Patty LaBelle stateside. I campaigned and I voted for Mayor Harold Washington. When I was based in Los Angeles, I campaigned and voted for Bradley. I then found myself in South Africa, and I campaigned for the yes referendum. Then I campaigned for Nelson Mandela for the ANC, followed by helping to campaign for him to be the first president of South Africa in representation of not only the United States but of Inglewood. Before you, I am the creator of the Mediba Shirt out of Chicago. Today I stand before you on the shoulders of so many like myself. The people who voted and campaigned you campaigned to put you into these offices, only again to see you guys get here and act like some kind of mafia bosses that can't get along with each other. I'm here to tell you that only you can turn Chicago around. You can start by publicly respecting each other and at least appear to be supportive of each other's agenda, especially in front of the camera. And why? Because all the ground, all the crime that you see on the ground is merely an exaggerated mirrored effect of what goes on in this very room here in City Hall. And by the time it trickles down to the ground level, it's blown out of proportion times 10 and is now unimaginable and unimaginable. Respecting each other publicly was the first thing. The second thing is the renaming of Lake Shore Drive for Jean Baptiste Point Dusabo. Dusabo was not only the founder, it needs to be celebrated, but he was also the first black man to be arrested and accosted for no reason. He cultivated this very land on this building that we stand on. When new settlers arrived and wanted to buy property, he would refuse and then deed them the land for free. And with his native in-laws, he would help them clear and start their building. In that spirit of Dusabo, if you cannot match that, then you are representing the wrong city. This city was founded on a good heart. The streets are a reflection of all of you in this room. So when you want to talk about crime on the ground level, let's start in the mirror by respecting ourselves first and then each other. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Petway, for your comments. Our next speaker is Olga Rojas.
Good afternoon. Thank you for letting me speak today, Honorable Mayor Lightfoot and members of the City Council and staff. I'm here to speak in behalf of the confirmation of Celia Mesa. My name is Olga Rojas, and I'm here as co-chair of the Latina Lawyers Commission of the Hispanic Lawyers Association of Illinois. I met Celia Mesa when she was Assistant U.S. Attorney. We were both working across the street from each other on Dearborn in federal, different federal buildings. We got to know each other as members of the Hispanic Lawyers Association of Illinois through its various meetings and charitable activities. When she decided to leave the U.S. Attorney's Office, I had the pleasure of attending her farewell party that was attended by various federal agents and the U.S. Attorney at the time, Patrick Fitzgerald. They were all sad to see her go because she did such a wonderful job at that position. Celia has shown at all her employment positions that she has a strong work ethic, she is knowledgeable, and she does her job well. That's why you've heard glowing statements from her former employers and colleagues in the legal profession. Celia has proven that she has the experience and more than qualified to do the job because she has been doing it as Acting Corporation Counsel. I am proud to be here to call her a colleague and a friend. And even though we are somewhat contemporaries in age, she has been a role model for me, and she is a role model for, model for the next generation of Latina lawyers and other women of color in the legal profession. She has vowed that she is going to improve minority hiring in the city's law department. I am here to urge the City Council to vote to confirm Celia Mesa as the first Latina Corporation Counsel of the city of Chicago. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rojas, for your comments. Our next speaker is Efrem Martin.
Good Honorable Mayor Lightfoot and members of this full City Council, good, good morning, good afternoon, this time. For unity and togetherness in this honorable assemble, yesterday the Black Heroes Matter Coalition accepted your propose, your proposal to rename Lake Shore Drive as Jean Baptiste Point Dusabo Lake Shore Drive. And that is Alderman Moore and King's ordinance. And we ask all of you, and I trust that you will encourage all your, your opponents to support this ordinance. Jean Baptiste Point Dusabo Lake Shore Drive without the changing of residential address should be accepted by all. And this, once this action takes effect, there's no doubt it will affect, affectionately be called Dusabo Lake Shore Drive. As we seek this historic change to correct the wrongs to Chicago's founding father Dusabo and to start a part to end systemic racism in Chicago, we are appealing to Alderman Hopkins to be truthful to his people, even if he's not going to vote yes. Alderman Hopkins, for more than a month, you know the truth, that no residential addresses will be affected. Going forward, let us be honest and be truthful to our people and let them make their own decisions. This city is thirsty for love, peace, equal rights, and justice for all. We must learn to live together as one. The honorable, this honorable council must work together as one family. The Black Heroes Matter, the Black Heroes Matter Campaign is for a reasonable and worthwhile cause. We should be supported by all council members. Dr. Martin Luther King said, "Our lives begin to end today. We become silent about the things that matter." Dusabo Lake Shore Drive matters. Mayor Lightfoot, you recently said, "What has been given to Dusabo so far is a joke." And yes, we, you are right. The Black Heroes Matter Coalition and Chicagoans, thank you for this great beginning today as council members vote yes to rename the Outer Lake Shore Drive as Dusabo Drive. Now on Martin's International Motor Bringing Nations Together Through Music and Culture, we encourage all of you to do the right thing and vote yes to change the political climate in this city. Today, after the Dusabo Drive is officially named, your $40 million can be used to offer the monument and other things. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Martin, for your comments. Our next speaker is George Lakemore.
The games that people play. Is this speaker on? The games that people play. This lady is old soup. She'd been already working for the city of Chicago. We, did you put a national search for Corporation Counsel? No. So it's business as usual with the political hacks, the democratic machine. Business as usual. Respect. You know, when people disrespect me, I disrespect them. When people kind to me, I'm kind to them. Whoever said, "Love your enemy." What is the definition of your enemy? That's a person who hates you! This is insanity to love your enemy. You want to destroy your enemy. This is a war for survival, and every ethnic group is pandered for his or her own, and I'm pandered for black people enslaved in America. Now we have black so-called leadership, aldermen, mayors, commissioners, state's attorneys, but we are still a permanent underclass in America. And those who know should help those who don't know. The miseducation of the black man. The, all these titles, alderman woo-woo and alderman boo-boo who are black, go to your wars! And are you getting good service and contracts and jobs? No! No, you're not. The games that people play. And this lady had nerve enough to come up and, and speak about some religion, a myth or what, "Love your enemy." I hate my enemy because my enemy want to destroy me. My enemy don't have my interest. So it's a damn fool to love their enemy, and we must, uh, uh, respect the law. And, and Parliament should, whatever saga that went on between Jeanette, uh, uh, alderman Miss Jeanette and, and, and Mayor Lightfoot. We have rules and regulations, and we must all follow them. I don't follow them all the time. The white man doesn't follow. So why should, you want me to follow them? She's all political hack that lady, and don't follow her. Thank you! Gosh!
Thank you, Mr. Blakeford, for your comments. However, your time has expired. Our next speaker is Marilyn May.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and all Chicago City Council members and staff. By now, most of you know my name is Marilyn May, and I am with the Black Heroes Matter Coalition as Communications Co-Chair. However, what you all may not know is that I was born in Mississippi, and by the time I was four years old, my parents made the great migration to the south side of Chicago. And I spent my formative years in Bronzeville near 43rd and King Drive, which was a self-contained community. Everything we needed was right there: grocery stores, barber shops, beauty shops, record stores. Occasionally, we'd catch a jitney beyond our bubble to larger grocery stores or go to 35th Street and King Drive to shop for clothing or even 47th or 60th. to 35th Street and King Drive to shop for clothing or even 47th or 63rd Streets. You see, it was common knowledge back then that blacks, African-Americans were not particularly welcome downtown and most definitely not north of the Chicago River. We could work there, but only a few of us were welcome to live, shop, or play there. That's just the way it was. Fast forward, my parents divorced by the time I was entering middle school and so I completed the rest of my education in the suburbs, but remained tied to Chicago through my father and other family with weekend and extended summer visits. After high school, I returned to Chicago to live and to explore higher education and occupational opportunities. And I must say, by then, some things had changed in some ways. Anyway, I felt all of that to say this. I know Chicago, I know the people, I know its beauty, I know its ugliness, I know its rhythm, its heartbeat, and I know that the core reason that we've had this tremendous fight for De Sabre is due to the history of racist thinking that I learned about when I was just a child and witnessed and experienced as an adult. Nevertheless, we are here this afternoon on the brink of making history by passing this long-awaited ordinance for John Baptiste Pointe du Sabre Drive, which we've recently agreed should be John Baptiste Pointe du Sabre Drive, Pointe du Sabre Lake Shore Drive. City leaders, lots and for all, vote yes to this ordinance for De Sabre today. Shows Chicago residents and the world that we truly are a city that works. There may be some bickering and fights, but in the end, we work it out. Right now, I'm smiling, just like I did as a child when I learned that Chicago was founded by a man whose skin color was like mine. Leaders, you've got to do this for the children, for the teenagers, and even the adults who live in the various communities and neighborhoods that make up this great city. Lift the spirit of this city, make us all smile. De Sabre deserves the monument.
Thank you, Ms. May, for your comments. However, your time has expired. Our next speaker is Maureen Martino.
Please press star six to unmute.
Hello. Thank you, Madam Clerk and Mayor Lightfoot and council members for this opportunity to speak on behalf of the Lakeview Commercial Quarter regarding reform for our small business community. Many people may think the pandemic is over and our businesses are back operating at levels prior to COVID. However, the reality is that many businesses are still trying to acquire funding to open their doors and others do not have the workforce to be operating at 100% capacity. We are still struggling. It is now more than ever our government leaders must make the necessary changes that will help our business community not only recover but thrive. Chi Biz Strong is the first step in the right direction to put in place new policies that will expedite licensing, streamline processes, and cut the red tape so that our city will become more business-friendly. City departments need to work closely together and make it a clear path for business owners and industry to acquire permits and not have to wait months for licenses and simple signs and awnings. The city's economic future is set with decisions that we make today and by holding on to antiquated ways of operating will stifle our business community. We support Chi Biz Strong and thank Commissioner Rosa Esquinera and her team at Business Affairs and Consumer Protection, the Small Business Assembly, Abbotsey Council, and the Illinois Restaurant and Retail Association for advocating for our small businesses as leader in our industry. We look at our local aldermen, Tom Tunney, Alderman James Kapelman, and Scott Wackaspek, who's always supported small business to continue to do the right thing. In order for this city to recover, we must change the way we operate. Supporting Chi Biz Strong will begin to put us back onto the path to recovery and begin to rebuild our communities for future growth. I thank you for this time.
Thank you, Ms. Martino, for your comments. Our next speaker is Juan Murado Jr.
Good afternoon. My name is Juan Murado Jr. and I'm here today in my capacity as a Board Director for the Hispanic Lawyers Association of Illinois and as Chairperson of the Latino Leadership Council. The Hispanic Lawyers Association Illinois and LLC strongly supports the confirmation of Celia Mesa as Corporation Counsel for the City of Chicago today. Last Wednesday, the City of Chicago had the opportunity to make history by confirming Celia Mesa as the first Latina to serve as Corporation Counsel, and this did not happen. As officers of the court, we understand the importance of seeking justice for all and recognize the many issues that are plaguing our city. And we are here today and very proud to stand with Celia, an experienced attorney with a history of excellence in the law, dedication to public service, and commitment to assisting the most vulnerable in our community. Celia is a skilled attorney with more than 25 years of experience in the areas of labor and employment law, legal ethics, corporate compliance, and investigations. Celia has served in the Criminal Division of the U.S. Attorney's Office in Chicago and as Assistant U.S. Attorney and in the City of Chicago's Office of the Inspector General as well as in the Mayor's Office. She is more than qualified for this position. Celia has a proven record of excellence and her distinguished career is admirable. Today, we and other of our associations stand with Celia and her family in full support of her confirmation as the first Latina Corporation Counsel for the City of Chicago. Personally, I would like to add that I had the pleasure of working with Celia as a new attorney and I appreciate the lessons she bestowed to me during that time. This appointment is significant for our community and a much-needed step towards parity for Latinos in the city. Finally, I would like to add that I recognize what happened to Ms. Young is unacceptable. As an attorney, I also recognize that this case is working its way towards resolution and the motion to dismiss, which is a concern for many aldermen, is really a matter of routine in litigation. To attribute importance to this action would be incorrect and to use it as a basis to defer or vote against this historic confirmation of Ms. Mesa is a travesty. I strongly urge the members of the City Council to confirm Ms. Mesa's disposition. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murado, for your comments. Our next speaker is Malcolm Crawford.
Hello.
We can hear you.
Okay, great. This is Malcolm Crawford and I am the Executive Director of Austin's African-American Business Networking Association. I am excited about Chi Biz Strong and what's to come. We are developing Chicago Avenue right now as the sole city corridor, which is a place that will function as an economic driver for African-Americans in the City of Chicago. And we see of our business have seen firsthand devastation during the, during COVID. And so, Chi Biz Strong is a bold plan to cut and re-tape and provide financial assistance as we reimagine doing business in the City of Chicago. I would like for you to know that the 15th, the, the 57th Street Business Association, the 95th Street Business Association, Andersonville Chamber, the Austin Chamber of Commerce, Back of the Yard Chamber, the Berry Area Association, Belmont Central Chamber, the West Side Forward, Urban League, Aston Park Chamber of Commerce, Little Village Chamber of Commerce, the American Association, Southern Association, Uptown Chamber of Commerce, and the Austin African-American Business Networking Association all stand in support of Chi Biz Strong. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Crawford, for your comments. Our final speaker today is Jaime DiPaolo.
Good afternoon, Ms. Mayor and City Council. My name is Jaime DiPaolo. I am the President and CEO of the Illinois Spanish Chamber of Commerce. Today, we stand in support of Celia Mesa and her appointment as City Corporate Counsel. The truth is, despite great efforts around equity and diversity and inclusion, Latinos and Latinas remain scarce in the legal profession. Celia Mesa has over 25 years of experience in many areas of the law, litigation, labor unemployment, ethics, and compliance, and many, many more. Celia is the daughter of migrant farm workers. She is a shining example of power, of handwork, and persistence. Let us come together today and do something about that. Just last week, we welcomed the first African-American woman to lead the great fire department of the City of Chicago. Today, you have an opportunity to welcome the first Latina to ever serve as a City Corporate Counsel. Last but not least, we urge the passage of the Chi Biz Strong Economic Package today. After seeing the suffering left of our communities by the pandemic, the ICC believes that this is the economic package that will be essential aid to the recovery of the hundreds of thousands of small businesses that need help in this crucial time in economic recovery. Thank you for your time and I urge the approval of Celia Mesa and pass the Chi Biz Strong today. Thank you for your attention and keep up the good work.
Thank you, Mr. DiPaolo, for your comments. Your Honor, there are no further speakers who have timely signed up for the public comment period.
This concludes the public comment period. There are no resolutions. Madam Clerk, communications.
A series of communications from our honor, the mayor, to the Honorable, the City Council, the City of Chicago. Ladies and gentlemen, the request of the City Treasurer, I transmit here with an ordinance amending the municipal code to update the city's investment policy. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated, very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Finance. Ladies and gentlemen, the request of Commissioner, Planning and Development, I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing execution of an infrastructure agreement associated with the sale of Michael Reese Hospital site. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated, very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Finance. Ladies and gentlemen, the request of the Commissioner of Housing, I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing the issuance of up to $87 million in tax-exempt housing revenue bonds for RS Roosevelt Square 3B Housing Development Project. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated, very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Finance. Ladies and gentlemen, the request of the Commissioner of Streets and Sanitation Assets Information Services, I transmit here with an ordinance amending an intergovernmental agreement with the Cook County Sheriff from the County of Cook, referred to the Sheriff's Work Alternative Program Swap. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated, very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Budget and Government Operations. Ladies and gentlemen, the request of the Budget Director, I transmit here with a Fund 925 Amendment, favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated, very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Budget and Government Operations. Ladies and gentlemen, the request of Director of Department of Administrative Hearings, I transmit here an ordinance regarding remote administrative hearings. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated, very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on the Budget and Government Operations. Ladies and gentlemen, the request of Chief Procurement Officer in the Corporation Counsel, I transmit here with an ordinance amending the municipal code regarding minority-owned and woman-owned enterprises, MWBE, participation in the city's construction contracts. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated, very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, referred to the Committee on Contracting Oversight and Equity. Ladies and gentlemen, the request of Chief Procurement Officer, I transmit here with, here with, together with Alderman Vegas and ordinance extending the veteran-owned Small Local Business Participation Goal Pilot Program on July 31, 2023. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated, very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Contracting Oversight and Equity. Ladies and gentlemen, the request of the Commissioner, Planning and Development, I transmit here with ordinance is authorizing a favorable tax status for specified properties located in the city. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated, very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, referred to the Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development. Ladies and gentlemen, the request of the Commissioner, Planning and Development, I transmit here with, together with Alderman Laspada, an ordinance amending the Keep Chicago Renting Ordinance. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated, very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Ladies and gentlemen, the request of Commissioner of Assets Information Services, I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing the execution of ground lease agreement with the Boys-Green Girls Club of Chicago. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated, very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Ladies and gentlemen, the request of the Commissioner of Housing, I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing the execution of a multifamily loan agreement with Casa Durango LP for an affordable housing construction. Your consideration, consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated, very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Ladies and gentlemen, the request of the Chief Financial Officer, I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing the execution of an intergovernmental agreement with the Chicago Park District regarding Durkin Park. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated, very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Ladies and gentlemen, the request of the Commissioner of Assets Information Services, I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing the execution of a lease agreement with all things through Christ Outreach Ministries. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated, very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Ladies and gentlemen, the Commissioner of the, of Housing, I transmit here with ordinance is authorizing the execution of loan restructuring agreements with entities providing affordable housing for seniors. Your favorable consideration of these ordinance will be appreciated, very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Ladies and gentlemen, the request of Commissioner, Planning and Development, I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing the acquisition of property located at 3625 West Chicago Avenue. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated, very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Ladies and gentlemen, the request of Commissioner, Planning and Development, I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing the acquisition of property located at the intersection of 79th and Exchange. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated, very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Ladies and gentlemen, the request of the Commissioner, Planning and Development, I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing the acquisition of the former Pioneer Bank site. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated, very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Ladies and gentlemen, the request of the Commissioner, Planning and Development, I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing the sale of Michael Reese Hospital site to GRIT Chicago LLC. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated, very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Ladies and gentlemen, the request of the Commissioner of Housing, I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing the sale of city-owned property. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated, very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Ladies and gentlemen, the request of the Commissioner, Planning and Development, I transmit here with ordinance is authorizing the sale of city-owned properties. Your favorable consideration of these ordinance will be, would be, will be appreciated, very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Ladies and gentlemen, the request of the Commissioner of Streets and Sanitation, I transmit here with an ordinance amending the municipal code regarding issuance of notice to owners of impounded vehicles identified after a 10-day notice period. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated, very truly yours, Lori Light, E. Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Pedestrian Traffic Safety. Ladies and gentlemen, the request of the Commissioner of Buildings, I transmit here with an ordinance amending the municipal code to cap late payment penalties on unpaid building inspection fees. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated, very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, referred to the Committee on Zoning Landmarks and Building Standards. Ladies and gentlemen, I transmit here with the appointments to various special service areas. Your favorable consideration of these appointments will be appreciated, very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development. Ladies and gentlemen, I've appointed Nanette L. Dorley, Dorley, as a member of the Police Board for a term effective immediately and expiring August 10, 2024, to complete the unexpired term of John P. O'Malley Jr. has, who has resigned. Your favorable consideration of this appointment will be appreciated, very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Public Safety. Ladies and gentlemen, I transmit here together with Alderman Cardenas and Vegas a resolution opposing disenfranchisement of city residents who are not U.S. citizens. Your favorable consideration of this resolution will be appreciated, very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Immigrant and Refugee Rights. I City Clerk Anna Valencia hereby, hereby inform the City Council that the following documents were filed in my office relating to the respective subjects designated as follows. Amendment number two to the Near North Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Plan and Project. Office of Inspector General's Advisory Regarding the City of Chicago Department of Assets Information Services Inventory and Management of Municipal License plates issued and registered to city vehicles. Office Inspector General's Public Safety Section Follow-Up Evaluation Report Regarding the Chicago Police Department's Random Review of Body-Worn Camera Recordings. Offer the Office of Inspector General's 2020 Annual Public Safety Section Report. Eighth amended reissued Department of Health Order Number 2020-9 specifying guidelines for city's, city's Phase Five reopening and notification from Alderman David, Davis Moore, or David Moore regarding to intent, the intent to vote yes on zoning reclassification ordinance for property at 4758 North Milwaukee Avenue. Office of Inspector General's Review of Disciplinary Grievance Procedure for Chicago Police Department. I City Clerk Valencia also informed the City Council that all those matters which were considered by the City Council, the regular meeting held on May 26, 2021, in which required by statute to be published in book or pamphlet form or in one or more newspapers were published in pamphlet form on June 23, 2021 by being printed in full text and printed in pamphlet copies to the Journal of Proceedings of the City Council of the City of Chicago. Okay. I City Clerk Valencia also informed the City Council that all those matters which were considered by the City Council, the regular meeting held on June 23, 2021, and which required by statute to be published in book or pamphlet form or in one or more newspapers were published in pamphlet form on June 25, 2021 by being printed in full text and printed pamphlet copies of the Journal of Proceedings of the City Council of the City of Chicago. I City Clerk Valencia also transmit here with the following miscellaneous communications and reports requiring City Council action. Zoning reclassifications of particular areas which are referred to the Committee on Zoning Landmarks and Building Standards. Claims Against the City of Chicago which refer to the Committee on Finance. Amendment of Municipal Code Section 356-041 to extend reduced term Wheel Tax License Pilot Program to July 31, 2022, which is referred to the Committee on Finance. And recommendation by Commit, Commission on Chicago Landmarks for Designations of Former Schlitz Brewery Tide House at 1393-1399 West Lake Street as Chicago Landmark, which is a which is referred to the Committee on Zoning Landmarks and Building Standards. Your Honor, that concludes mayoral and clerk's communication.
Next is committee reports. Any Alderman wishing to speak on an item should use the teleconference raise hand function to be recognized. Finance Chairman Wagasback.
Finance Committee, please proceed.
Thank you, Madam President. Ladies and gentlemen, Madam President, reporting for the City Council's Committee on Finance, which met June seventh and June twenty-first, twenty-twenty-one. Item number one, the sole report from the meeting of June seventh, twenty-twenty-one, is a communication authorized in the amendment of Municipal Code Chapter Ten dash thirty, thirty-two, by adding a new section Ten Thirty-two dash Two Forty-five to establish the Urban Forestry Advisory Board. The item received favorable approval by the committee. If no one wishes to speak on the matter, I move to concur with the recommendation of the committee by roll call vote.
Alderman Laspada. Alderman Hopkins.
Aye.
Alderman Dow. Alderman King. Alderman Hairston.
Aye.
Alderman Sawyer.
Aye.
Alderman Sawyer is an aye. Alderman Mitchell.
Aye.
Alderman Harris.
Aye.
Alderman Beal.
Yep.
Alderman Zlaski Garza.
Yes.
Alderman Thompson.
Aye.
Alderman Cardenas.
Aye.
Alderman Quinn.
Aye.
Alderman Burke.
Aye.
Alderman Lopez. Alderman Coleman. Alderman Moore.
Aye.
Alderman Curtis. Alderman O'Shea.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Uh.
Alderman Brookins.
Aye.
Alderman Rodriguez.
Aye.
Alderman Tabarez.
Aye.
Alderman Scott. Alderman Scott. Alderman Sichu Lopez.
Aye.
Alderman Maldonado.
Aye.
Alderman Burnett.
Aye.
Alderman Irvin.
Aye.
Alderman Talafaro.
Aye.
Alderman Reboyas.
Aye.
Alderman Cardona.
Aye.
Alderman Wagaspack.
Aye.
Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez.
Aye.
Alderman Austin.
Aye.
Alderman Ramirez Rosa.
Aye.
Alderman Vegas.
Aye.
Alderman Mits.
Aye.
Alderman Spassato.
Nick Spassato is aye.
Alderman Nugent.
Aye.
Alderman Vasquez.
Aye.
Alderman Napolitano.
Aye.
Alderman Riley.
Aye.
Alderman Smith.
Aye.
Alderman Tunny.
Aye.
Alderman Gardner. Alderman Kapelman. Alderman Martin.
Aye.
Alderman Ostroman.
Aye.
Alderman Haddon.
Aye.
Alderman Silverstein.
Aye.
Alderman Scott votes aye. Thank you for joining us.
Ladies and gentlemen, the yeas are forty-nine, the nays are zero. The motion passes. Alderman Thompson on the motion for reconsideration.
Thank you, Madam President. I move to reconsider the last vote.
All those in favor of the motion for reconsideration signify by saying aye. All those opposed say nay. The motion fails. Chairman Wagasback, just one moment as a point of information. Alderman Laspada, does your microphone not work?
It, it occasionally works.
So I'm wondering if the gentleman in the, the control booth can make sure that as an Alderman's name is called, that you're turning on their microphone so that they're able to be heard. I think that was the challenge. All right, thank you. Chairman Wagasback.
Here. Just kidding. There was, nevermind. Forty-nine. Who are we missing? Might not hug each other, but we'll hug a tree. Madam President, moving on to reports from the meeting of June twenty-first, twenty-twenty-one. Item number one is the appointment of Michaela Blaze as a member of the Northwest Home Equity Commission. The item received favorable approval by the committee. If anyone wishes to speak on the matter, I thought we had one person indicating to me earlier.
The chair recognizes Alderman Tunny.
Thank you, Madam President. I wanted to stand in support of this confirmation. I didn't have an opportunity to speak at the Finance Committee for her support. So I have known Michaelia for many, many years as a staff assistant for Alderman Helen Schiller. But one of the things that I recalled in her testimony was very important to me. And I think what Alderman Schiller did, and in that, for that matter, Alderman Kapelman are doing, I think the most important statement she said was development without displacement. And I think that that is really key to not just Northwest Equity, but for our city. We have all this rigmarole about gentrification and this and that, and it's like development without displacement is the key to our city. And I just wanted to compliment you and to say that on the record because that's what our city is about. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Alderman Tunny. Any other members who wish to speak on this matter? The chair recognizes Alderman Nugent. Can we please turn her microphone on?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm clearly very supportive of this appointment. I think Michaela brings a wealth of knowledge. She's a class act. I think she'll be fantastic in this role. Also, I just know her to be an incredibly generous and kind person, a great parent, and a great neighbor. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Alderman Nugent. Any other members who wish to speak on this matter? Back to you, Chairman Wagasback.
Thank you, Madam President. I move passage of Ms. Blaze's appointment by the first most favorable roll call vote on the Committee on Finance report and corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
There are no objections, so ordered.
Item number two is a communication authorized in the amendment of Municipal Code Sections Three dash Thirty dash Zero Two Zero and Three dash Thirty dash Zero Five Zero and adding new section Three dash Three Zero dash Zero Six Zero, requiring food delivery companies to collect and remit city restaurant taxes. The item received favorable approval by the committee. If no one wishes to speak on the matter, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance report and the corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
There are no objections, so ordered.
Item number three is a communication authorized in the City of Chicago to expand the vacant TIF purchase and rehabilitation program to include multifamily homes and various amendments to the existing multifamily home program agreements with Community Investment Corporation. This item received favorable approval by the committee. If no one wishes to speak on the matter, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance report and the corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
There are no objections, so ordered.
Item number four is a communication authorized in the City of Chicago to restructure the loan agreement with Prairie Park Limited Partnership for Capital Improvements, Rehabilitation and Equipping of Low and Moderate Income Housing located at Fifty-five Twenty-One South Prairie Avenue, Fifty-five Thirty-Seven South Prairie Avenue, Three Seventeen East Fifty-Fifth Place, Fifty-six Hundred South Calumet Avenue, and Fifty-six Twelve to Fifty-six Twenty South Calumet Avenue in the Twentieth Ward. This item received favorable approval by the committee. If no one wishes to speak on the matter, I move passage by the most favorable, first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance report and corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
There are no objections, so ordered.
Item number five is a communication authorized in the City of Chicago to enter into and execute a redevelopment agreement with Roots ALBLP and Solidon Construction Company for financial assistance, including tax increment financing funds in the amount of two million five hundred thousand dollars for metropolitan apartments, affordable housing at Thirty-five Fifty-nine West Lawrence Avenue in the Thirty-third Ward. The item received favorable approval by the committee. If no one wishes to speak on the matter, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance report and corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
There are no objections, so ordered.
Item number six is a communication authorized in the City of Chicago to enter into and execute an intergovernmental agreement with the Chicago Park District and Chicago Public Schools for adjacent land lease at River Edge and the provision of tax increment financing funds in the amount of eight hundred thousand dollars for shoreline stabilization and multi-use trail at Kiwanis Park located at Thirty-three Fifteen West Carmen Avenue in the Thirty-ninth Ward. The item received favorable approval by the committee. If no one wishes to speak on the matter, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance report and corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
There are no objections, so ordered.
Item number seven is a communication authorized in the City of Chicago to enter into and execute an intergovernmental agreement with the Chicago Park District and Chicago Public Schools for land lease and provision of tax increment financing funds in the amount of two million dollars for development of a new River Edge Park with multi-use trail along North Side Prep and Legion Park located at Fifty-five Oh One North Kedzie in the Fortieth Ward. The item received favorable approval in the committee. If no one wishes to speak on the matter, I move passage by first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance report and the corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
There are no objections, so ordered.
Item number eight is a communication authorized in the City of Chicago to enter into and execute an intergovernmental agreement with Chicago Park District to provide tax increment financing funds in the amount of three hundred thousand dollars for pathway improvements at Jesse Owens Park located at Eighty-eight Hundred South Clyde Street in the Eighth Ward. The item received favorable approval by the committee. If no one wishes to speak on the matter, move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance report and corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
There are no objections, so ordered.
Item number nine is a communication authorized in the City of Chicago to enter into and execute an intergovernmental agreement with the Chicago Park District to provide tax increment financing funds in the amount of eight point nine million dollars for renovations of the Fieldhouse, Little League Field, the Water Court, Stable Area, and Conservatory Children's Garden at Garfield Park located at One Hundred North Central Park Avenue in the Twenty-Eighth Ward. The item received favorable approval by the committee. If.
The chair recognizes Alderman Irvin.
Madam, thank you, Madam President. I do want to speak on this. With Garfield Park being probably one of the largest parks on the west side and one of the gems of our city, and actually previously was the headquarters of the West Chicago Park District, this major investment on the west side of Chicago is, is great. I want to thank the mayor and the members of the park district and primarily also the Garfield Park Advisory Council for bringing a lot of these items in to our attention as well through their framework planning to identify the needs for the park. While this is, we still have other things to do. I just want to thank everybody for their support of working to help the west side of Chicago. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Irvin. Chairman Wagasback.
If no one else wishes to speak on this matter, I may passage by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance report corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
There are no objections, so ordered.
Madam President, item number ten is a communication authorized in the City of Chicago to enter into and execute an intergovernmental agreement with the Chicago Park District to provide tax increment financing funds in the amount of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for construction of boat storage and water access improvements at River Park located at Fifty-one Hundred North Francisco Avenue in the Fortieth Ward. The item received favorable approval by the committee. If no one wishes to speak on the matter, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote on the Committee on Finance report and corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
There are no objections, so ordered.
Item number eleven is a communication authorized in the City of Chicago to enter into and execute an intergovernmental agreement with the Chicago Park District to provide tax increment financing funds in the amount of three hundred fifty thousand dollars for development of a pocket park at Park Five Ninety-four located at Thirty-one Fifty-nine South Halsted Street in the Eleventh Ward. The item received favorable approval by the committee. If no one wishes to speak on the matter, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance report and the corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
There are no objections, so ordered.
Item number twelve is a communication authorized in the City of Chicago to enter into and execute an intergovernmental agreement with the Chicago Park District to provide tax or increment financing funds, TIF funds in the amount of three point five million dollars. The city transfer of property. The creation of community gardens. The construction of gathering pavilion, a gathering pavilion and the expansion of Ronin Park located at Three Thousand West Argyle Street in the Thirty-third Ward. The item received favorable approval by the committee. If no one wishes to speak on the matter, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance report and corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
There are no objections, so ordered.
Item number thirteen is a communication authorized in the City of Chicago to enter into and execute an intergovernmental agreement with the Chicago Park District to provide tax increment financing funds in the amount of six hundred thousand dollars for certain improvements at Douglas Park located at Fourteen Oh One South Sacramento Drive in the Twenty-fourth Ward. This item received favorable approval by the committee. If no one wishes to speak on the matter, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance report and corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
There are no objections, so ordered.
Madam President, item number fourteen is regarding monthly settlements through the Law Department and will be placed on file with the clerk.
So noted.
Items fifteen and sixteen consist of authorizations for the payment of various small claims against the city and denials of payment of various small claims against the city. If there's no objection, I ask that these items be placed on the omnibus.
There are no objections, so ordered.
Item seventeen consists of one order authorizing tag day permits for the American Civil Liberties Union. If there is no objection, I ask that these items be placed, this item be placed on the omnibus.
There are no objections, so ordered.
And item eighteen consists of an order authorizing Corporation Council to enter into and execute a settlement in the case of a proposed settlement in the case of Jane Doe One, Jane Doe Two, Jane Doe Three, Jane Doe Four, and Jane Doe Five versus the City of Chicago cited as eighteen CV Thirty-Fifty-four in the amount of one point eight two five million dollars. The item did receive favorable approval by the committee. If no one wishes to speak on the matter, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance report and corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
There are no objections, so ordered.
Madam President, this concludes the report of the Committee on Finance.
Thank you, Chairman Ragusback. Next up, the Committee on Budget and Government Operations. Chairman Dow.
Thank you, Madam President and members of the City Council, reporting for your Committee on the Budget and Government Operations, which held a meeting on June sixteenth, twenty-twenty-one. The committee recommends passage of the following items. Number one, a communication concerning the appointment of Andrea Cheng as Commissioner of the Department of Water Management. I move passage of this item by the first favorable roll call vote in the Committee on Finance and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
There are no objections.
Number, number two, a communication.
One moment, one moment, Chairman Dow.
Okay.
Do any members wish to speak on this? Chairman Vegas.
Thank you, uh, thank you, Madam President. I wanted to speak in favor of the, the appointment of Dr. Chang and, and support that department, especially given the fact that there's some, there's going to be some capital bill, some capital money coming down from Washington that's going to deal with lead service lines. It's a big issue that we have. We're number one in the country as relates to lead service lines. And so when we're closely with the department to make sure that we're getting the lead out. The other thing that I would say is we're closely with her as well to make sure that there's some diversity. One of the things that I'm going to be consistent on is making sure that not just diversity, but also parity. The city, this city is made up of nearly a third of Latinos, and we need to make sure that the cabinet, administration, the workforce is reflective of that. And so I look forward to working with Dr. Chang and making sure that there's some diversity, but also some parity. And you have a very, a very tough job. But, but I want you to know that we're here to support you because we want to make sure that this, the great people of the City of Chicago have some clean, clean water to, to drink. So, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. The chair recognizes Alderman O'Shea.
Thank you, Madam President. I too rise and.
I too rise in support. Over the last several weeks, I've had many discussions and communications with Andrea Cheng, and I appreciate her responsiveness to my community and look forward to working with her as we tackle the many, many issues we have throughout Chicago with our sewers and waters. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman O'Shea. The Chair recognizes Alderman Haddon.
Thank you, Madam President. Just want to rise in support of this nomination as well. Dr. Cheng, I'm excited to have someone with your professional background in this position. And as saddened as we were to see Commissioner Connor go, happy that you're here with your leadership to continue the good work for all of our cities. So, thank you so much.
Thank you, Alderman. The Chair recognizes Alderman Lopez. One second. Can you please turn his microphone on? Please proceed.
Again, good afternoon. Thank you, Madam President. Again, good afternoon, Madam President, members of the committee. I rise today in support of this nomination. I know that in committee, I had some very terse words for the state that many of our neighborhoods have been left in, particularly as it relates to this contractual dispute between our, our Water Department and our contractors relating, related to the understanding between the I E P A. I'm only rising in support today because you've reached out to try to figure out how we can work together to rectify this situation. And for that, I am thankful. And I look forward to working with your department to ensure that all of our neighborhoods that have been left in limbo through these years can finally see some action and movement and get back on with their lives. So, I look forward to working with you on that and the administration to bring this to an end. Thank you, Madam President.
The Chair recognizes Chairman Wegas back.
Thank you, Madam President. I too rise to support this excellent appointment. I had the opportunity to work with Dr. Chen during the Joliet Water Issue, which hopefully will provide that area of our state with water in the future for decades to come. As we were doing that, I was listing what to the issues that she was talking about as Alderman Vegas brought up. We have a lead pipe issue and having somebody who has the experience, the background, the knowledge, and the desire to really tackle these water crisis issues, I think is very important for us. You've got a lot going on in that department. I think that all of us working together will be able to tackle this issue for us right now, but also for future generations because we all want to make sure that there's clean water for everyone for decades to come. And I hope that we can continue to work together in that direction. So, thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Chairman Wegas back. The Chair recognizes Alderman Laspada.
Thank you very much, Madam President. Yes, rising very enthusiastically in support of Dr. Cheng's nomination. Alderman Lopez said this best, it's the reaching out, it's the sense of collaboration that I, we're already feeling even in your acting role. And certainly, water, access to clean water is one of Chicago's greatest comparative advantages to the rest of our country, but it comes with its challenges, whether it is related to urban agriculture in our city, water affordability for the lowest income Chicagoans, looking at equitable infrastructure investments. But you have already come to this work with such a spirit of openness and collaboration and a willingness to really solve these problems in a meaningful way. And I look forward to your tenure and continuing to do that work with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. The Chair recognizes Alderman Rodriguez.
Thank you, Madam President. I too would like to be associated with this appointment. Dr. Cheng, in her brief time in the interim, has been out to my community time and again. We've been out knocking on doors and engaging our neighbors in the process of replacing lead service lines. Your ability to communicate in my community has not gone unnoticed. I'm glad you've been out. We will continue to be out together. I will say that I concur with Chairman Vegas when it comes to parity in our community. For the Latinx community here in the City of Chicago, we need to make sure that, you know, our communities are being served, served well, and we have representation at all levels of governments. But I will say that I have been very impressed with your willingness to engage. We have a major issue here in our city, inequitable access to water, and the inequities in our water infrastructure are major issues. I think you get it, and I think you're putting your money where your mouth is. So, I'm happy to support your appointment as Commissioner. Thank you for the time, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Rodriguez. The Chair recognizes Alderman Cardenas.
Thank you, Madam President. I join my colleagues in this fine appointment. Andrea Cheng, Dr. Cheng, as you recall, you've earned it. No, we've had some discussions, not just on equity, but also on, on water management and that, that department that needs leadership so badly. It's going to be a tough task to manage all the expectations from all the stakeholders. Important, more importantly, I think the Alderman set the pace. So, I wish you well. There's lots to do on equity and getting the right people in your, on your team hired. But more importantly, you've got to get things done on the streets. You gotta, you gotta make sure that the city as a whole and the work that is getting done, it quickly is repaired, getting, getting, the neighbors back to, to health. Let's make sure we get that and work on collaboration for the best of our city. So, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Cardenas. The Chair recognizes Alderman Irvin.
Thank you, Madam President. So, you like to knock on doors, eh? All right, okay. But again, I too rise to wish you well in this endeavor. I know it's a large department, it's got a lot of challenges, and we have seen some, you know, excruciating pain in, in previous administrations of the department, and we hope and pray and as my colleagues have talked about the issue of parity, the issue of getting it right. And so, we hope that you and your leadership will help us right this wrong that is happening in not only just the African-American community, but other communities across our city, and also as people work in our communities, in some cases, how they leave our communities once that work is finished. So, again, you've been honest, you've been open in deliberation about how we can help fix some of these things. So, be blessed, and we look forward to support your confirmation today. Thank you.
Any other members that wish to speak on this matter?
Motion to, for passage of this item by the first favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
There are no objections, so ordered. Dr. Cheng, welcome to the Cabinet.
Item number two, Madam President, is a communication concerning the appointment of Brandy Canazza as Commissioner of the Department of Family and Support Services.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Harris.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to commend you on this appointment. Brandy is simply, and I'm, excuse me, Commissioner, Brandy Canazza is simply a fabulous young lady to work with, and I am so thrilled to have the opportunity for you to be at the helm. I am just, can't wait for all the wonderful things that are going to be coming across your desk that we're going to work with in our community, and want you to know that I remain an open door for you to come through. But as normal, my staff reserves the right to call your staff a billion times. So, thank you, Madam President, for this.
Thank you, Alderman Harris. The Chair recognizes Alderman Haddon.
Thank you, Madam President. Ms. Nazi, thank you so much again. This is a fantastic appointment, Mayor, and we are very lucky to have you serving the city. And I know I got to spend a little time talking to actually both of you on Wednesday. Thank you for coming back today, I'll say, and thank you for staying with the city. DFSS has been just a phenomenal department throughout the pandemic. I know we've worked with your office quite a bit in the 49th Ward and look forward to continue you do so. So, thanks for stepping up. We're lucky again to have a woman at the helm with so much very specific experience for our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Haddon. The Chair recognizes Alderman Moore.
Thank you. I definitely stand in support of this appointment. Madam President, you've done an excellent job in this appointment. In this business, we often talk about having a bench and having a bench prepared so somebody leave, go down, or whatever. And in this case, in that Department of Family Services, she was prepared. We also talk about people following in somebody's footsteps or shoes being hard to feel. Well, what I loved about Commissioner Morris Butler, she trusted this lady to the fullest, and she was already walking in that path, establishing her own way. And sometimes you feel like if you're going to miss a step when somebody leave, well, you have to start all over. Not in this case. It's not a learning curve, it's moving forward. And she works with Alderman very well, communicates with them very well, everything that you ask for in a great leader. You hit a home run with this one. Thank you so much, and I, and as always, I'm here to support in any way that I can. I see your beautiful mother and dad here. Well, I'm going to say dad is so beautiful, but mom is, but he cool. And, and, but I'm sure that, you know, they raised you in a way that you've proven to make them even proud amongst all of us. So, thank you so much.
Thank you, Alderman Moore. The Chair recognizes Alderman Irvin.
Thank you, Madam President. Again, Brandy, congratulations to your work. And it's, it's interesting when I, I look at you and your, my little mentor, Jonathan, and see you all doing great things in great spaces. So, keep up the good work, and you have done a lot in your, in your position previous to getting, to becoming the Commissioner. Just keep up the good work and keep doing what you've been doing and keep using the skillset that you've learned. And also, you know, as you said, you've had more compassion than most people I see in these positions. And again, continue to do that because what you do affects a lot of people that are not having their best day. So, continue your work and be blessed. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Irvin. The Chair recognizes Alderman Austin.
Thank you, Madam President. Yes, you have done an outstanding job in this one. You didn't have to reach far, just looking to the department who was already there, as Alderman Moore has stated. You already had a second in command. And Brandy, I argued her when we first started, I just spelled her name because I wanted to spell it with a Y. It's okay, Alderman, just as meaningful. I'm so grateful to have been acquainted with you before this appointment because I know that with this appointment, you will do more than an outstanding job because you've already been doing it. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Austin. The Chair recognizes Alderman Harris.
Members of City Council, I too rise in support of this appointment. Brandy, you have been invaluable to my office, and this is a right fit for you. This is a good fit for you. Not only do you bring the knowledge and the compassion, but you, you, you've got that mother whip, right, about you? And you bring your life experiences, and that is something that is very unique to be able to apply to this position that impacts so many in so many different levels and ways. So, I'm there to support you. Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Harrison. The Chair recognizes Alderman Scott.
Thank you, Madam President and members of the City Council. I too like to rise in support of this appointment. You know, I think the, the greatest compliment is to have your successor talk about the great work that you have done. And coincidentally, I ran into Commissioner Morrison Butler, I mean, two weeks ago, when she said, "What is taking so long? They got to appoint her." And I said, "Yeah, we do need to appoint her because of all the great work that you have done." We work very closely together, being the Chair of Education and Child Development. And so, I've grown accustomed to your work style and, and your passion and your hard work. And so, I would just urge you to continue to do that. Look forward to working with you. And again, Madam President, this is a great appointment. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Scott. The Chair recognizes Alderman Olsterman.
Thank you, Madam President. Commissioner Canazza, want to congratulate you, commend your mom and dad. Commissioner Morrison Butler was one of the finest public servants I think our city's had in a long time, and you were right there with her. It's important to note that your department has been one of the departments like public health that has guided us through the last 18 months of COVID with supporting young people, helping senior citizens, helping the homeless, helping those in need. We're not out of the woods in support of those people. If anything, there's a coming storm to deal with the after effects of COVID, but you know that, you're prepared for that. I also want to say that you want your budget hearings to go like today, right? We are your partners, and it's important for Commissioners to know that we're your partners. We are on the ground. We are the ones that are on the corners with your staff, talking to the homeless men, men and women. So, please take advantage of that with us, but wish you strength and perseverance in the work ahead and know that we're here to help you. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderman Cicchell Lopez.
Thank you.
Please turn on his microphone.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yep. Madam Chair, thank you, and I also like to be recognizing support of this appointment. DFSS is one of the most important and valuable departments that we have right now, especially during this, this very tragic period that we have in our communities. I have had a very positive experience so far with the new Commissioner, Commissioner Brandy. You have a very challenging task ahead of you, so I look forward to working collaboratively with our colleagues to make sure that we fund the department properly and we can ensure that homelessness in our communities is addressed properly and adequately. Youth services, family services are critical during this time. So, again, Commissioner, look forward to working with you, and I encourage all my colleagues to make sure that your department is fully funded. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Alderman. The Chair recognizes Alderman Vegas.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to stand in support of Commissioner Canazza. I had never had any interaction with her prior to us discussing that she was going to be the new Commissioner, and I was very impressed. And so, I look forward to working with you forward, Commissioner. Thank you, and good luck.
Thank you, Alderman. The Chair recognizes Alderman Vassilis.
Sorry, thank you, Madam Chair. I also stand in support of this appointment and wanted to say that not only am I in support, it is really powerful to see women in leadership and seeing women of color doing it and to see so many in the, in these positions. When somebody leaves, it might not go that way. I think it's something we need to acknowledge, and I want to thank you for that. I want to thank you as well. I'm going to call you Commissioner, even though it hasn't gone through yet, for the work that you have done. Times were difficult enough before COVID, and I think we all understand that although we're feeling like we're past it, some of those effects are still going to be happening for years to come, and we're going to have a lot of people in Chicago that are going to need our help, whether they're unhoused, whether they're in need of other services. And so, I hope that not only do you continue the work, and I'm glad that we won't be missing a step in that work, but that you also, with this new leadership, challenge us as far as where budget funds should go, where federal funds should go, to make sure that we are adequately staffed because we need to be more proactive in finding solutions for people. So, thank you so much for the work you do. Know that you have champions in us, and thank you, Madam Chair, for this appointment.
Thank you, Alderman. The Chair recognizes Alderman Kapelman.
Thank you, Madam President. I too record, stand in support of Brandy Canazza. We had a great conversation, and you stole my heart. I'll say Lisa Morrison Butler stole my heart, too. I, I had her phone number on speed dial. She was one of the few Commissioners where we could argue and disagree, and we always came away loving each other and respecting each other. You know, this is a tough job because you've worked with Lisa Morrison Butler, but you're also committed to best practices. You understand outcomes, you get it. You know it's, it's a systems issue that we have to keep focusing on, and you're a hard worker. So, I'm very, very pleased, and I want to thank you, Madam President, for this appointment. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Kapelman.
Thank you, Madam President. I too wanted to say I'm delighted with
Thank you, Madam President. I too wanted to say I'm delighted with this appointment. Commissioner Kanazia is not only compassionate, but she leans, she has a genuine heart and feel for the work that she does. She leans in hard and heavy and personally in that work. And I just wish you the best in your new position. And with that, I move passage of this item by the same motion if there is no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Welcome to the Cabinet Commissioner Kanazia. If I may, just before we move on, I've known Commissioner Kanazia since 2005 when we worked together in the city's procurement department. She's had a lot of experience and roles since then, and I'm extremely excited about her leadership. I'm extremely excited about her leadership. What I will also say to her parents is it's a parent's dream to raise your child and see them accomplished in life. But I think it's also a parent's dream to be present when others who have worked with them really bear witness to everything that you've tried to do to lead your child in the right direction. I also want to say to Commissioner Chang's mother, I believe, I want to just also say to this body, as we were negotiating with the city of Joliet to open up possibilities for a water contract with them, Commissioner Chang was very instrumental in getting that deal done. And one of the deal points brought up by the mayor and the members of the council of Joliet was Dr. Chang's credentials, someone of her qualifications, which are par excellence, being able to run this department made a huge difference, not only with them, but others that we hope to bring into the fold of selling water to. So to both of these ladies, I want to say thank you. Thank you to your commitment for public service and welcome to the Cabinet.
For three, Madam President and members of the City Council, is the substitute ordinance concerning an amendment to the annual appropriation ordinance year 2021 within Fund Number 925 for the Office of the Mayor, the Department of Business Affairs and Consumer Protection, the Department of Public Health, and the Department of Family and Support Services. I move passage of this item by the same motion if there is no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item number four is a substitute ordinance concerning authorization and funding for the Public Building Commission to undertake project work of city-owned buildings and facilities on 2021 capital plan projects list as periodically amended by the Department of Assets, Information and Services and appropriated by the City Council. I move passage of this item by the same motion if there is no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
This concludes my report. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Chairman Dow. Next up, Committee on Aviation. Chairman O'Shea.
Thank you, Madam President. Reporting for your Committee on Aviation, for which a virtual meeting was held on Monday, June 14, 2021. The committee had one item up for consideration, substitute ordnance 2021-2151, Amendment of Municipal Code Chapters 2-36, 10-36, and 15-4, by modifying various sections and adding new section 2-36-305 regarding enforcement and adjudication of fire code violations at Chicago O'Hare International Airport and Chicago Midway International Airport. These items passed unanimously by the committee members present. If there are no objections, Madam President, I move for passage of these items by the same roll call as item number one of the Committee on Finance in the same motion reconsidered.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
This concludes my report.
Thank you, Chairman O'Shea. Next up, Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development. Chairman Vegas.
Thank you, Madam President. Members of the City Council reporting for the Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development, which held a meeting on June 16, 2021. The committee recommends passage of the following items. Items one through 10 are a series of appointments and reappointments to various special service areas. These items were voted on collectively. Appointment of Laura Shallow as a member of SSA Number Five Commercial Avenue Commission. Reappointment of Eva J. Moran as a member of SSA Number 16, Greetown-Hosted Commission. Reappointments of David I. Gassman, James Ludwig, Michael Rafferty as members of SSA Number 18, North Hosted Commission. Reappointment of Brian Farrell as a member of SSA Number 20, Southwestern Avenue Commission. Reappointment of Francisco Menchaca as a member of SSA Number 25, Little Village Commission. Appointment of Andrea Mintz Gilreath as a member of SSA Number 31, Greater Ravenswood Commission. Appointment of Michael Hochhauser as a member of SSA Number 35, Lincoln Avenue Commission. And reappointment of Tony Fox as a member of SSA Number 54, Sheridan Road Commission. I move passage of these items by the first favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item 11, on the agenda is an ordinance in support of a Class 7B tax incentive for property generally located at 8560 South Cottage Grove Avenue. I move passage of this item by the first favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
The 12th item on the agenda is a substitute resolution that calls for open hearings to review and evaluate Chicago's cybersecurity protocols and technology. The substitute clarifies that it was a third-party vendor that was breached and not the city of Chicago. Furthermore, due to the sensitive nature of the subject matter, it allows for briefings to discuss the review and evaluation of the cybersecurity protocols and technology and thus scope of any open hearings. If there are no further objections, I move passage of this item by the first favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Lastly, the committee was briefed by Gartner on the IT assessment it performed for the city. Some of the key findings were positive, but there were several items that were disheartening. As a percentage of an operating budget, our IT spends is on par with our peer cities. However, 43% of the applications we use require replacement or migration to newer technologies. 32% of our IT workforce have 20-plus-year tenure, which means that it's possible we can find ourselves trying to fill vacancies at an unsustainable rate. The assessment also recommends increasing training, IT staff, and emerging technologies and competencies. In addition to this upscaling, we should also continuously improve to align the goals of departmental IT staff with those of the citywide IT staff. We have a fragmented IT staff operating different applications and employing different IT and data governance. In order to create efficiencies, we need to have all IT staff working as one. There needs to be top-level collaboration and an overreaching plan between departments. Basically, we need to invest in our IT. So come budget season, we want to make sure that we're investing in our IT because it's crucial to make sure that we're leading in the Midwest. So with that, that concludes my report, Madam President.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Vascas.
Mic check, one, two. There you go. Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to rise in support of the last agenda item. Coming into government after having a decade in the tech sector, this city needs improvement. And I want to make sure to commend Alderman Vegas for calling for the kind of study and assessment that the city needs. I think it's able to help us provide more efficient government, save the taxpayer dollars, and improve the experience for our constituents across the city. So I look forward to building off of that assessment and making sure we continue to improve our city and that we think about this when we get in the budget so that we can provide the proper resources and attention to our tech sector and to make sure government works better for the people of Chicago. Thank you very much.
Yeah, Committee on Rules. Chairman Harris.
Thank you, Madam President. Reporting for your Committee on Committees and Rules, which met Tuesday, June 22, 2020, at 3:00 p.m., the committee recommends the following re-referrals. Item one is an ordinance regarding a transfer of funds from the City Council on Housing and Real Estate for years 2021 for Personnel Services and Contract Service. The committee recommends that this item be re-referred to the Committee on Budget and Government Operations. I move approval of this recommendation by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Thank you. The committee recommends that items two through eight be re-referred to the Committee on License and Consumer Protection. The items are from the following wards. A, a series of amendments to the Municipal Code to allow additional packages, licenses, and wards 30, 37, and 45. Items five through seven, a series of designation of precincts of wards 23, 41, restricted residential zone prohibiting additional shared housing units and vacation rentals. Item eight, an amendment of the Municipal Code to further regulate regular fare rates for transportation network providers in Ward 42. I move approval of the recommendation that these two items, these items two through eight, be re-referred to the Committee on License and Consumer Protection by the same motion if there's no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
The committee recommends that item nine through 12 be re-referred to the Committee of Transportation and Public Way. The items are from the following wards. Dedication of the Public Way in Ward, in the 22nd Ward. Dedication of the Public Way in the 45th Ward. Approval of a plat of Lincoln Yard's South Resubdivision in the Second Ward. Vacation of North Truth Street bounded by, was, and I can't say this one, Wabansia, yay, Wabansia, West Concord Place and North Ada Street in the Second Ward. I move approval of the recommendation that the items nine through 12 be re-referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way by the same motion if there's no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
And item 13 is an ordinance requiring an amendment of the form of the certified public license agreement adopted by the City Council on September 6, 2017, in the 36th Ward. The committee recommends that this item be re-referred to the Committee on Workforce Development. I move approval of this recommendation by the same motion if there's no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
The committee recommends that item 14 through 24 be re-referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. The items are from the following wards. Historic Landmark Fee Waiver for Property in the Second Ward. An amendment of the Municipal Code, Section 17-3-0503D, by modifying certain pedestrian retail street designations in the 40th Ward. A series of permits for signs in the 42nd Ward. And an amendment of the Municipal Code regarding general district standards for indoor and outdoor operations and use standards for outdoor walk-up service windows going to the 42nd, 47th Ward. Coming, I move approval of the recommendations of the items 14 through 24 be re-referred to the Committee on Zoning and Landmark Standards by the same motion if there's no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Thank you. Thank you for referring all those wonderful items to rules.
Does that conclude your report, Madam Chair?
That concludes my report, Madam President.
Thank you, ma'am. Next up, Committee on Education and Child Development. Chairman Scott.
Madam President and members of the City Council, reporting for your Committee on Education and Child Development, which held a virtual meeting on June 9, 2021. The committee recommends the passage of the following item. An ordinance authorizing an agreement for the Northwestern University utilizing its AL3 digital platform, After School Matters Learning Program for Chicago Public Schools, now named My Shine, My Future Program through the Department of Family and Support Services, 020201-2156. I move this passage, I move the passage of this item by the first most favorable roll call of the Committee on Finance and successful, unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
This concludes my report. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, sir. Next up, the Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Chairman Osterman.
Thank you, Madam President. And members of City Council, reporting for your Committee on Housing and Real Estate, which held a virtual meeting on June 15, 2021. The committee has a series of reports recommending passage of the following. Item number one is a lease agreement with Public Health Institute of Metropolitan Chicago for use of city-owned vacant space at Woodlawn Neighborhood Health Center, 6337 South Woodlawn. I move passage of this item by the first favorable roll call in the Committee on Finance and associated unsuccessful motion to consider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item number two is a lease agreement for neighbor space for city-owned vacant property located at 6029-6035 South Dr. Martin Luther King Drive for use of community garden. I make the same motion if there's no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item number three is a lease agreement for vacant land to the Chicago Park District for development operation of secure community gathering space, including, in the 28th Ward, an outdoor roller rink and community plaza project at 4004-4012 West Madison Avenue. I make the same motion if there's no objection.
Chair recognizes Alderman Irvin.
Thank you, Madam President. First off, I just want to thank the Park District and the mayor for the utilization of the cannabis funds. The Madison and Pulaski area has been long charged and long challenged with cannabis traffic. And so I think this is a great utilization to create a community space. And you also work with our children in the area to kind of deter them from following that same path as some of our elders have done. So appreciate the thinking of this and to create an outdoor recreational space for gathering for not only our children, but also for our seniors and other members of the community. It's not just a roller skating plaza, but it is a community space that we hope that everyone will have an opportunity to utilize. Thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
If I may add, this is an effort of nine months of community engagement, the first manifestation of investments as a result of this West Side Initiative, aided by pro bono work of Studio Gang and a host of other stakeholders on the ground in that community. The groundbreaking for the roller rink will be sometime in July, and we will invite you all to attend.
We all look forward to being there. Item number four is the acquisition of certain right-of-way parcels for Division Street Reconstruction Project. I make the same motion if there's no objection.
Chairman Osterman, if we may, just to make sure the record is clear, I'm not sure we tied up the last item. You made a motion, I believe.
Made a motion on item number three, which is the item in the 28th Ward. And I make the same motion if there's no objection to that item number three.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Thank you. Item number four is the acquisition of certain right-of-way parcels for Division Street Reconstruction Project. I make the same motion if there's no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Madam President, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Chairman Osterman. Next up, the Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Chairman Mitz.
Thank you, Madam President and members of the City Council. I'm reporting for the Committee on License and Consumer Protection. We held a virtual meeting on June 17, 2021, and the following items were passed by the committee. Item number 02021-2592, an ordinance to amend the Municipal Code regarding licensing and other business-related regulation offered by the mayor and the Department of Business Affairs and Consumer Protection. Madam President, I move that the City Council concur in the recommendation of the License Committee and pass this item by the same roll call vote as item number one, with the exception of Alderman Hopkins, Alderman Riley, Alderman Gardner, and Alderman Bill voting no.
Those who vote no votes are noted for the record. The Chair recognizes Alderman Riley.
Thank you, Madam President. I wanted to stand, I was hoping to stand in support of this ordinance today because 95% of it, I think, is excellent. But there is one item in this ordinance that is objectionable to me. And I know several of my colleagues, and that's Article 7, that impacts our role in the approval of public right-of-way permits and outdoor cafes. And as we, you know, we spent a lot of time with Chairman Mitz, and Chairman Mitz did a fantastic job leading our work group discussions. Thank you, Chairman. But throughout that process, I communicated my concerns about relinquishing that control. And during the discussion, all of the conversation was tied up with this 60 days that businesses are forced to wait until ordinance is passed to make these permits official. And I completely understand that. It's wrong. We want to get these businesses their signs and their outdoor cafes as soon as humanly possible. But to suggest But to suggest that eliminating the legislative role in that approval will somehow speed the process, there's another way to skin that cat. We all have used from time to time pending passage letters. And I'm not suggesting we generate thousands of pending passage letters to get people their permits on time. But we could change the way we operate as a chamber and as a matter of protocol, issue these permits to these businesses so long as the alderman has signed off. And then we can get around to passing that ordinance down the road. But then no one's waiting for it. So I think that would be a creative way to accomplish the administration's goal and the business community's goal of shortening that process and getting folks speed to market, while we also would then be preserving our role in the formal approval process and not simply checking the box, making a recommendation to the department. And I want to be very clear, my concern with this portion of the ordinance has nothing to do with Mayor Lightfoot or her administration or Commissioner Escorino. I trust them to honor the process they've promised us with this legislation. My concern is future city councils, future administrations who may not be as interested in playing nicely with us. And that's my real concern is the precedent and the policy we're setting for future councils and future mayors. And because of that, I would like to move to divide the question and consider Article 7 separately from the rest of the ordinance numbered 02021 dash 2592. Because I think everyone here recognizes the bulk of this ordinance is fantastic. It's going to do really good things for the business community here in Chicago, and I applaud the mayor for that. But again, I'm moving per Rule 17 to divide the question and consider Article 7 separately from the rest of the ordinance. And I believe. I have a second.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Harris.
To lay that motion on the table.
So, just so we're clear, there will be a roll call. Want to make sure that all the members of the body understand what the, the motion is. Alderman Riley has moved to separate out Article 7 of this ordinance, which presines to the right-of-way. Chairman Harris has moved to lay it on the table. So the pending motion is to lay Alderman Riley's motion on the table. So if you vote yes, it's to lay the motion on the table. If you vote no, it's to proceed with Alderman Riley's motion. Is that fair? All right. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Okay. Alderman Lasfatta.
Yes.
Alderman Lasfatta is a yes. Alderman Hopkins.
No on the motion to table.
Alden, Alderman Hopkins is a no. Alderman Dow.
Yes.
Alderman Dow is a yes. Alderman King.
No.
And King is a no. Alderman Harrison.
No.
Alderman Harrison is a no. Alderman Sawyer.
No.
Alderman Sawyer is a no. Alderman Mitchell. Alderman Mitchell is a no. Alderman Harris.
Yes.
Alderman Harris is a yes. Alderman Beal.
No.
Alderman Beal is a no. Alderman Zelasky Garza.
No.
Alderman Zelasky Garza is a no. Alderman Thompson.
No.
Alderman Thompson is a no. Alderman Cardenas.
Yeah.
Alderman Cardenas is a yes. Alderman Quinn.
No.
Alderman Quinn is a no. Alderman Burke.
No.
Alderman Burke is a no. Alderman Lopez.
No.
Alderman Lopez is a no. Alderman Coleman.
No.
Alderman Coleman is a no. Alderman Moore.
No.
Alderman Moore is a no. Alderman Curtis. Sorry, Alderman O'Shea.
No.
Alderman O'Shea is a no. Alderman Taylor.
No.
Alderman Taylor is a no. Alderman Brookins. Alderman Brookins is a yes. Alderman Rodriguez.
Yes.
Alderman Rodriguez is a yes. Alderman Tabarez.
No.
Alderman Tabarez is a no. Alderman Scott.
Yes.
Alderman Scott is a yes. Alderman Tito Lopez.
No.
Alderman Tito Lopez is a no. Alderman Maldonado.
Aye.
Alderman Maldonado isn't, yes. Alderman Burnett.
Yes.
Alderman Burnett is a yes. Alderman Irvin.
Yes.
Alderman Irvin is a yes. Alderman Talafaro. Alderman Talafaro.
Alderman Talafaro is a yes.
Alderman Talafaro is a yes. Alderman Raboyas.
No.
Alderman Raboyas is a no. Alderman Cardona.
No.
Alderman Cardona is a no. Alderman Waguspack.
Yeah.
Alderman Waguspack is a yes. Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez.
No.
Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez is a no. Alderman Austin.
Yes.
Alderman Austin is a yes. Alderman Ramirez Rosa.
No.
Alderman Ramirez Rosa is a no. Alderman Vegas. Alderman Vegas is a no. Alderman Mitz.
Yes.
Alderman Mitz is a yes. Alderman Sposato.
Nick Sposato is a no.
Alderman Sposato is a no. Alderman Nugent.
No.
Alderman Nugent is a no. Alderman Vasquez.
No.
Alderman Vasquez is a no. Alderman Apalatano.
No.
Then Alderman Apalatano is a no. Alderman Riley.
No.
Alderman Riley is a no. Alderman Smith.
Yes.
Alderman Smith is a yes. Alderman Tony.
Yes.
Alderman Tony is a yes. Alderman Gardner.
No.
Alderman Gardner is a no. Alderman Capelman. Alderman Capelman is a yes. Alderman Martin. Alderman Martin is a yes. Alderman Osterman.
Yes.
Alderman Osterman is a yes. Alderman Haddon.
Yes.
Alderman Haddon is a yes. Alderman Silverstein.
No.
Alderman Silverstein is a no.
On the motion to lay it on the table, the yeas are 20, the nays are 29. The motion to lay it on the table fails. Back to Alderman Riley's motion to separate out Article 7. Alderman, I assume you're asking for a roll call vote?
Yes, Madam President, I'd like to request a roll call vote.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Tony.
Thank you, Madam President. As one who is a signed applicant and a business startup, I think this ordinance to, to move it and expedite it is essential. We're talking about two or three months for a sign to get through our processes. And what I've said, and I think what BACP and AIS, AIS is saying, every day we get a permit for applications and every day issued and applied. And we need to develop that system so that we know every application for a business license is on our desk every day and do our work and get it done and sign off on it or get the commissioner involved. And I think this package is really about helping businesses get started. And I, I tell you, for the most part, as you know, if you get the first business open, if you can get the business open in the city of Chicago, there's a darn good chance you're going to succeed because it's so darn hard. And this is one of many, many things that I think we do our job every day to get notice of everything going on in our ward. And I really believe we can, on the front end, work on disputed issues or issues that we don't know. But at the end, you've heard it loud and clear that businesses need to get some expedited nature and without hiring expediter. Half these people have to hire somebody just to get the, just to get the sign passed. So, you know, I know that there are, as someone who does this and has been through this, I think if you, if we do this on a separate vote, I would suggest that we move forward in a positive way with this resolution. Thank you, Madam President.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Lopez.
Thank you, Madam President, and again, good afternoon, members of the City Council. I rise in joining Alderman Riley in support of dividing this question. I think, to quote my colleague, there are many good things in this ordinance, which many businesses support, which many businesses in my community support. But the permitting issue is something that I think we have to look at better. I know that the administration has said that this is about cutting through red tape, that this is about making things quicker and faster for businesses. Well, I can tell you in a real world example that there's usually a two-month lag between the time my signature goes on a piece of paper, on an application, and given back to a business before BACP comes before this body with an ordinance. That is not two months of us foot dragging. That is two months of bureaucratic slowing, the bureaucratic process slowing things down. That's not being discussed. That's not being impacted by this ordinance. Actually, we're putting more faith in the bureaucrats to move faster without us when we already know they move fast, they move slower as it is. So I think dividing the question, addressing that separately is the best way to go because I think that we can have multiple victories together as opposed to just one defeat if this does not succeed. Thank you, Madam President.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Cardenas.
Thank you, Madam President. I wasn't going to speak on this item, but I think it's important to understand what the idea is. Modernizing a process that a lot of us would agree, it's a Byzantine process. It's, it's outdated. A lot of folks need that expediency, need a quick recovery from whatever's happening to them. And I thought long and hard about, you know, the, the package that was put before us. I went through it. I had Rosa Escudeno, the commissioner, explain exactly what it meant and where the alderman came in on the front end. And all through those steps, I, I told her that you got to ensure that the alderman's, it's, you know, not just informed, but signs off on it. Because he, he's got to know and she's got to know, whoever the older person is, what's happening in, in, in that community with those businesses. A lot of, that I'm not happy with, with special use that a business gets and, you know, you didn't approve it, you didn't have a chance to, to plan for it and to accommodate that new business that is coming and whatever infrastructure needs must, must happen. And in this case, though, we, we got to modernize and we've got to come together, and hopefully we do that today so that we give the businesses a leg up. In the old days, it was different reasons why an alderman had to be involved in every little thing in the ward at the ward level. And I'm not going to go back and litigate that. I think all of us know what happened in the past wasn't kosher. It wasn't what should have been happening. And we're, this is the 21st century, we're just 2021, so much technology at our disposal. Let's use it. Let's, let's right here debate what needs to happen so that we can have a win-win. I agree with you. I've talked about it. I'm for alderman prerogative. Everybody knows that. I will not vote on something that's going to marginalize and minimize my decision-making because I know what's best for my community. But I do know the businesses and what they're going through, and we got to help them out as well. So let's talk through those steps, that we got to make sure it happens. So we give them that opportunity to, to be more, more nimble and lessen the cost. It is, and not just on the back and the front end, for them to come to you and chase you and chase me, whoever, and then come back to City Hall, it's a lot, a lot of legwork. They don't have the time. They have to hire somebody, thousands of dollars. This expediter's charge, thousands of dollars for them just to get a license, a sign. It, it's crazy. That, that should not happen in the modern Chicago. So whatever happens, Madam President, I hope that we, we come to a conclusion of that process, respect the prerogative that we've always fought for and help the business at the same time. We can figure it out. Let's figure it out.
recognizes Alderman Hopkins.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. Just in the interest of clarity, the last couple of speakers are talking about the, the substance of the ordinance and the merits of it. But the motion actually before us is just to divide the question. So the next vote we take will be whether or not to have a separate vote on that section of the ordinance. And then all the discussion regarding the merits of that substance, you know, would be in order. But just to be clear, we really should take the vote on whether or not to divide the question before we have a substantive debate on the ordinance itself. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Alderman Smith.
Thank you very much, Madam President. And I'm mindful of what Alderman Hopkins just said. I, I will say that I, I don't think we need to divide the vote because this is a very good measure and important for the revival of the city. To my colleagues who are newer here and are concerned about their, a potential threat to their ability to really make sure things run well in your ward. Every, every council meeting, we come to council when we're in person and we were doing things on paper, and you got a little package on your, on your, on your desk. And that package was the public right-of-way ordinances that we're talking about here. I, I think it's almost all. The signs, the banners, the canopy, all that. And I don't know about you, I would flip through those and I had to sign them three times because at that time we needed three copies. And then I would find the application, which I had already signed. I've never in 10 years ever had a sign, proposed sign ordinance that I was now getting ready to introduce into committee, be for something that I hadn't already signed sometimes months before, not just 60 days. Because there's some workflow issue in the committee or in the department. Months would go by. And all that time, an honest businessman who was trying to put his sign up couldn't do it. Meanwhile, everyone knows this delay that goes on at City Council. So if you're a young guy, you want to get your business going, you just put the sign up. And then we say, hey, somebody finally inspects him and he said he never had a, never had an ordinance. So what's really this is about is if you got a really bad actor or you forgot or some process broke down in your own office when the application came to you and you didn't sign it. That's really what this is about. And I think you need to ask yourselves, because I know my younger, my, my more recent colleagues are all incredibly interested in having good government and efficient government and government that is powerfully responsive to our constituents. That's what I certainly believe. Powerful to our constituents and allow us to help advocate for them for the communities they want. I believe that. I think everybody believes that in the City Council. But whether or not your approval or disapproval is registered through a check on a box, which is of course how we do everything today, or signing three sheets of paper for an ordinance that you've already approved months earlier, is what we're really talking about. Now let me say this also, just to make it crystal clear what we're talking about and why I think we should not divide the vote and we should just vote and approve this, approve this measure. Is that when you, when you say you don't like a sign, it can't be just because you don't like it. Because that's actually not even the rule of law. And the notion that we have unbridled power to turn down a sign for no, for any reason or no reason at all is bad government. And that's kind of what the concern is here. The concern is, is that if I don't have the power to deny a sign for no reason at all or whatever reason I think is best for my community, the city won't be bound to listen to me. And therefore I won't be protecting my community. So let's see how many ti, that has happened less than a handful of times in my experience. In my experience, if you don't like a sign, you or your staff get on the phone with the guy with the application that says, we hate this sign. It's too big for the neighborhood. It's distracting. And, and you all, if you haven't been through this yet where you're trying to decide whether the sign should be red or white or blue, or I did that with Target, in fact, when my community did not want brightly colored Target signs, we sat down with the business and they worked it out. So I think the concern about some power being lost, certainly the power to, to not follow a good procedure might cause this problem. Fortunately, all this stuff is now online and you get alerts and all that kind of stuff. Maybe we lose that. Okay. Maybe we lose the power to unilaterally, unilaterally deny something just because we don't like that guy and we want to get back at him. Well, I think we need to do a better job on things like that. I don't think that's right. And I don't think you think that's right either. So I think you need to question the fear that is being shaken here against the reality of the situation. The truth is, no matter what we talk about, aldermanic prerogative, it is not aldermanic dictatorship. And it's not aldermanic rule, you know, ruled by the, what is it, the length of my thumb or something like that. It's not some dictatorial, magisterial sort of thing. It's really advocating for our people. And there is not a commissioner today nor ever who will not listen to you if you are coming with them with a true concern. Because you know what? They want your vote and budget time. And they know that you can create real trouble for them if they're non-responsive. And really good businesses, we, right now, we're holding up, in most cases, the businesses that are trying to comply with our crazy rules that take months and months and months to comply with. the businesses that are trying to comply with our crazy rules that take months and months and months to comply with. And we're not talking about, we would much be better off spending the city's resources, finding all the people who didn't have permits at all. Then we'll really find the bad actors and we'll have a good time with them. So what I'm trying to say to you is that the notion that this is somehow trampling on aldermanic power is really kind of mythical. It really is. Now I say this with incredible amount of respect for my neighbor Alderman Riley. Because what, in those meetings, I would have a stack an inch thick and he would have a stack a foot thick. So he's got the biggest, the largest amount of right-of-way issues in the entire city by far. And I certainly respect everything he does in his ward. He's a tremendous alderman. And I understand exactly what his point here today is. That is, it's an overwhelming process and it's really hard to keep track of. And we really should be worried to make sure that we protect our constituents. Unfortunately, I don't think that the solution that he has in mind will do that. And further, let me just say this, just so it's all, at least I think it's clear to me. Nothing happens in any legislative body with just the concurrence of one legislator. Only the executive branch can act as one. It can sign off. So this new ordinance is very craftily drafted in order to maintain our influence and maintain our judgment in a way and still be a legal exercise of city authority. It's really the only way to do it if you, if you think that the system we have right now is no good. And I really think it's no good. And I wish there was some other alternative. But the truth is, it isn't. So I really hope that you will consider this. Because I will tell you, I do not feel that you're, I don't feel that if I have a sign violator in my ward that suddenly I'm giving up my power to do and don't care. I don't feel I am because I know I'm not. And I also hope that you, you will think that too. This is, this is smart government that people have been working on in a reform for like 12 years. Alderman Wagasback was, was part of the original coalition from the small business people of people just saying, you know, I'm trying to open a business, I can't get my sign for four months. Because it's not 60 days. It's longer. You look at those forms that come to you and see when you signed up on them. You know, the ones that we're now getting online. So I'm sorry for going on with a long time, but this is a really important issue. It's a big, it's a big deal for City Council to actually say, hey, we're giving up some of our processes. So, but this one is a really good one. I'll oppose other ones, but this one, I think it's great.
Alderman Smith.
Thank you.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Chairman Mitz.
Ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you.
The debate is still proceeding.
Thank you. And I would like everyone to give me their undivided attention. This is really serious business. And as we've heard our constituents during public comments, talk about how important this ordinance is for the businesses, we heard no one speak against this. We took a lot of time to work with you to get your feedback. And yes, it's your right to vote no on anything. But I'm pleading with you today to not to divide this ordinance. It is too important for us to get back on track. And too many peoples have testified, even today. I heard shy biz need to get passed. Not to say if I don't get what I want, then I'm not going to give you what you want. That's not democracy here. Because we had many discussions. And yes, we heard you know votes. And I certainly respect them and recorded them. But to get here in council today and say, I want to divide, that is not right. That is not right. So I plead with you, don't do it. We need to vote this ordinance out today. And if we need to compromise, it's not here on the floor to compromise. Let's work together. My colleagues, I'm asking you that. Don't put us under a gun when we don't have to be there while we flex our muscles and our power about what we want. Because actually it's what the constituents want. This is not about us. We get paid to do a job, whatever way it is. And if they bring a sign to us, then look at the sign, send it back. In fact, it might be less work for us because a lot of you might not even be in office to get the sign when people come in. And then they got to waiting to catch up with us. Let's not put people through that. Let's move business in a way Chicago can move forward in an expedia way and not slow down a process talking about our prerogatives. Just be glad to serve. Isn't that, that's the simplest thing? Be glad to serve. Be glad somebody wants the city sending you a sign. Let them do their job. That's what they get paid for too. We can't be everywhere and do everything, you all. So I'm encouraging you today, don't divide it. Just don't do it. Please don't do it. Now let's move forward so that we can go home and enjoy our families. Don't put all us under the gun. If you wish to vote no, vote no. But don't just stop the whole process because you want to vote no. So I'm encouraging you today. Please stand with the chair as I work with you all. I've never been disrespectful or unfair. And I expect the same courtesy from each and every one. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Mitz. The chair recognizes Alderman Ramirez-Rosa.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. You know, I rise in support of the motion that is before us at this moment in time. I hear what my colleagues have said about the necessity of the provisions in this ordinance. And I agree with them. I'm a yes on this package. But our colleagues have asked us to divide this question under Rule 17. Rule 17 was put into our Rules of Order and Procedure to allow for a fair and democratic debate, a collegial debate. And I believe it's the collegial thing to do, to vote yes, to allow this question to be divided and to respect what our colleagues are telling us right now. Which is that they like certain portions of this ordinance, but there are other portions that they have questions about. And they would like the opportunity to take each one of those up separately. So I think that this is a question of process. I think that if you support the package, you can still support dividing the question. And I hope that that's what we do today. I think based upon the motion that was just voted on to lay on the table, I think it's pretty clear that there's a lot of support in this moment in time to divide the question. And so as a matter of fact, for those of us like myself that are supporting this broader package, I think there's an argument to be made here that if you support this package and you want to see the important provisions in this ordinance be forward, that the best thing to do in this point in time is to divide the question, to allow these matters to be taken up and voted on separately so that we can see all those good things that we want to see move forward today do so. And the provision in this ordinance that many of our colleagues have issues with can be considered separate. So I hope that we will do the collegial thing. Rule 17 exists for a reason. We put it in there precisely for what's happening right now. I think it's fair. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. The chair recognizes Alderman Kappelman.
Thank you, Madam President. I have family all over the country. And when I talked with them about the term expediter, they scratched their heads. Why would you need an expediter? The amount of red tape that we go through for our businesses, and this is before our pandemic, is unimaginable. But, but now these, these businesses are struggling from this pandemic. And before that, it was the internet. It is now the time to do everything we can to support these businesses. Cities all over the country are cutting all the red tape. It's time for us to step up and do the same. Thank you, Madam President.
Chair recognized, thank you, Alderman Kappelman. The chair recognizes Alderman Osterman.
I want to stand with Chairman Mitz. This is a package deal. And I think it's important for us to know as elected officials here that businesses have a choice to do business in Chicago. Businesses have a choice to reopen in Chicago. How many businesses were lost in the last 18 months? How many businesses were shuttered last summer? How many have reopened? So the business community, small business operators, are looking to what we do to decide what they do. And if we want to create jobs and open small businesses up around the city of Chicago, then we have to work to streamline this stuff. And if that means us giving up a little bit of power, let's give it to the business owners and streamline it. The world's not going to stop on a few signs. They want this to happen. Let's keep this as one vote. Let's pass it as one. And let's tell the business community and those that want to open up in this recovery that we're here to be ready to do business. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Osterman. Any other members that wish to be heard before there's a vote, there's a pending motion? Alderman Riley, briefly?
Yes, and I will be brief, Madam President. Thank you. I just, before we close debate, I wanted to acknowledge Chairman Mitz's comments earlier. I have tremendous respect for you, Chairman. But Rule 17, Rule 17 exists for a reason. It's not used here very often. But I am asking to divide the question precisely because I think 98% of this ordinance is excellent and will provide desperately needed relief to our business community. I think everyone here knows I'm pretty pro-business. But I do think we need to retain a role in this process. And that's really important. Recommendations are different than authority. So that said, I, again, renew my motion to divide the question considering Article 7 separately from the ordinance before us.
So the motion that is on the floor for the body's consideration is to divide out Article 7 from the rest of the ordinance. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Lasparra.
No.
Alderman Lasparra, a no. Alderman Hopkins.
Yes, on the motion to divide.
Alderman Hopkins, yes. Alderman Dow.
No.
Alderman Dow, no. Alderman King.
Yes.
Alderman King, yes. Alderman Hairston.
Yes.
Alderman Hairston, yes. Alderman Sawyer.
Aye.
Alderman Sawyer, yes. Alderman Mitchell.
No.
Alderman Mitchell, a no. Alderman Harris.
No.
Alderman Harris, a no. Alderman Beal.
Yep.
Alderman Beal, a yes. Alderman Zlasky Garza.
No.
Alderman Zlasky Garza is a no. Alderman Thompson.
Yes.
Alderman Thompson is a yes. Alderman Cardness. Alderman Quinn. Alderman Quinn is a no. Alderman Burke.
Aye.
Alderman Burke is a yes. Alderman Lopez.
Aye.
Alderman Lopez is a yes. Alderman Cardness is a no. Alderman Coleman.
Yes.
Alderman Coleman is a yes. Alderman Moore.
Yes.
Alderman Moore is a yes. Alderman Curtis. Oh, sorry, I keep forgetting. Alderman O'Shea.
Aye.
Alderman Shea is an aye. Alderman Taylor.
Yes.
Alderman Taylor is a yes. Alderman Brookins. Alderman Brookins.
Aye.
Aye. Alderman Brookins is a yes. Alderman Rodriguez.
No.
Alderman Rodriguez is a no. Alderman Tabarez. Alderman Tabarez is a yes. Alderman Scott. Alderman Scott is a no. Alderman Tito Lopez. Alderman Tito Lopez is an aye. Alderman Maldonado.
No.
Alderman Maldonado is a no. Alderman Burnett.
No.
Alderman Burnett is a no. Alderman Urban.
No.
Alderman Urban is a no. Alderman Talafaro.
No.
Alderman Talafaro is a no. Alderman Raboyas.
No.
Alderman Raboyas is a no. Alderman Cardona.
Yes.
Alderman Cardona is a yes. Alderman Wagaspack.
No.
Alderman Wagaspack is a no. Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez.
Yes.
Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez is a yes. Alderman Austin.
No.
Austin is a no. Alderman Ramirez-Rosa.
Yes.
Alderman Ramirez-Rosa is a yes. Alderman Viegas.
Yes.
Alderman Viegas, the yes. Alderman Mitz.
No.
Alderman Mitz is a no. Alderman Spisato.
Next, Spisato is a no.
Alderman Spisato is a no. Alderman Nugent.
Yes.
Alderman Nugent is a yes. Alderman Vasquez.
Yes.
Alderman Vasquez is a yes. Alderman Napolitano. Napolitano is a no. Riley, or I'm sorry. Sorry, it's Friday at 3:00. Riley, Alderman Riley.
Yes.
Alderman Riley is a yes. Alderman Smith.
No.
Alderman Smith is a no. Alderman Tunny.
No.
Alderman Tunny is a no. Alderman Gardner.
No.
Alderman Gardner is a no. Alderman Kappelman.
No.
Alderman Kappelman is a no. Alderman Martin.
No.
Alderman Martin is a no. Alderman Osterman.
No.
Alderman Osterman is a no. Alderman Haddon.
Yes.
Alderman Haddon is a yes. Alderman Silverstein.
Yes.
Alderman Silverstein is a yes.
The votes are 25 ayes, 24 nays. The motion to divide the question succeeds. So Chairman Mitz, back to you. The question having been divided, Article 7 will be considered separately. All other provisions of the ordinance will be, will go forward first. So you'll need to make a motion.
She ain't ready to make that motion.
Hey Rod, you're unmuted.
Madam President, we held, we held a virtual meeting on June 22, 2021, and the following items were passed. Item number 02021 dash 2621 and ordinance renewing restricted residential zone pursuant to Chapter 4 dash 17 of the municipal code in the 13th ward.
One moment.
Madam President.
Let's let Chairman Mitz go and then I'm happy to entertain your questions. I apologize, I cannot hear you.
I asked for a motion to stand at ease or to stand at ease for a moment.
The body will stand at ease for a moment.
She said stand at ease for a moment. Are you approving the motion to stand at ease?
I'm asking the mayor to make a motion. To give the chairwoman a moment to read the correct motion.
Correct motion that was, that we were going to be voting on to pass.
Or a motion for the body to stand at ease to allow for Chairman Mitz to divide the question.
Yes, I wasn't asking for the motion to stand at ease. I was asking if you could make a motion to ease, to stand at ease so she so she could make the correct motion.
I believe that, I'm looking at Chairman Mitz. I believe that she's ready to proceed. Is that correct, Chairman Mitz?
No, I would like to stand at ease.
All right. Are you making a motion for the body to stand at ease?
Yes, Madam President. I make a motion for the body to stand at ease.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Thank you.
The council will resume. Chairman Mitz.
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, I move that the shybeers ordinance without Article 7 be voted upon at this time.
Second.
If there is no objection. We have the Article 7.
Are you asking for shybeers?
I'm asking for a roll call vote to move the shybeers ordinance without Article 7.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Without Article 7.
Please call the roll.
Alderman Lasparra.
Yes.
Alderman Lasparra is a yes. Alderman Hopkins.
Yes.
Alderman Hopkins is a yes. Alderman Dow.
Yes.
Alderman Dow is a yes. Alderman King.
Yes.
Alderman King is a yes. Alderman Hairston.
Yes.
Ladies and gentlemen, please, keep your voices down during the roll call so the clerk may hear.
Alderman Hairston is a yes. Alderman Sawyer.
Aye.
Alderman Sawyer is a yes. Alderman Mitchell. Alderman Mitchell is a yes. Alderman Harris.
Yes.
Alderman Harris is a yes. Alderman Beal.
Yep.
Alderman Beal is a yes. Alderman Zlasky Garza.
Yes.
Alderman Zlasky Garza is a yes. Alderman Thompson.
Aye.
Alderman Thompson is a yes. Alderman Cardness.
Alderman Cardness.
Alderman Cardness.
Aye.
Alderman Cardness is a yes. Alderman Quinn.
Aye.
Alderman Quinn is a yes. Alderman Burke.
Aye.
Alderman Burke is a yes. Alderman Lopez.
Aye.
Alderman Lopez is a yes. Alderman Coleman.
Yes.
Alderman Coleman is a yes. Alderman Moore.
Aye.
Alderman Moore is a yes. Alderman Curtis.
He's not here.
Oh, gosh, I keep forgetting. Alderman O'Shea.
Aye.
Yes. Alderman Taylor.
Yes.
Alderman Taylor is a yes. Alderman Brookins. Alderman Brookins is a yes. Alderman Rodriguez.
Aye.
Alderman Rodriguez is a yes. Alderman Tabarez.
Aye.
Alderman Tabarez is a yes. Alderman Scott. Alderman Scott is a yes. Alderman Tito Lopez. Alderman Tito Lopez is a yes. Alderman Maldonado.
Aye.
Alderman Maldonado is a yes. Alderman Burnett. Alderman Burnett is a yes. Alderman Urban.
Aye.
Alderman Urban is a yes. Alderman Talafaro.
Aye.
Alderman Talafaro is a yes. Alderman Raboyas.
Aye.
Alderman Raboyas is a yes. Alderman Cardona.
Aye.
Alderman Cardona is a yes. Alderman Wagis Pack.
Yes.
Alderman Wagis Pack is a yes. Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez.
Yes.
Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez is a yes. Alderman Austin.
Yes.
Alderman Austin is a yes. Alderman Ramirez Rosa.
Aye.
Ramirez Rosa is an aye. Alderman Viegas. Viegas is an aye. Alderman Mitz.
Aye.
Mitz is an aye. Alderman Spisato.
Nick Spisato is a yes.
Spisato is a yes. Alderman Nugent.
Aye.
Nugent is a yes. Alderman Vasquez. Vasquez is a yes. Alderman Napolitano.
Yes.
Napolitano is a yes. Alderman Riley.
Enthusiastic, yes.
Riley is a yes. Alderman Smith.
Yes.
Smith is a yes. Alderman Tony.
Yes.
Tony is a yes. Alderman Gardner.
Yes.
Gardner is a yes. Alderman Kappelman.
Yes.
Kappelman is a yes. Alderman Martin.
Yes.
Martin is a yes. Alderman Osterman. Osterman is a yes. Alderman Haddon.
Yes.
Haddon is a yes. Alderman Silverstein.
Yes.
Silverstein is a yes.
The yeses are 49, the nays are zero. Alderman Thompson on the motion for reconsideration.
Thank you, Madam President. I move that we reconsider that last vote.
All those in favor of the motion for reconsideration signify by saying aye? All those opposed, say nay?
No.
The nays have it, and motion for reconsideration fails. Alderman Mitz on Article 7.
Madam President, I now move passage of Article 7 of the shybeers ordinance.
Aye, roll call.
Roll call.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll. I'm sorry. Alderman Lopez, I thought you were calling for roll call. Do you want to be recognized? Pardon me? Alderman, the chair recognizes Alderman Lopez.
Thank you, Madam President. Alderman Rosana Rodriguez Sanchez and I move to defer and publish this item.
The item will be deferred and published. Alderman Mitz, anything else? Does that conclude your report? Does that conclude your report?
No, Madam. No, Madam. Madam President, if I can finish the report. We held a virtual meeting on June 22, 2021, and the following items was passed. Item number 02021-2621, an ordinance renewing restricted residential zones pursuant to Chapter 4-17 of the municipal code in the 13th Ward. Alderman Quinn, I move passage of the item by the same motion as item number one of the Committee on Finance and the same unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Ladies and gentlemen, we're in the middle of a vote. Please, keep your voices down. Hearing no objections, so ordered.
That concludes my report, Madam President.
Next up, the Committee on Pedestrian Traffic Safety. Chairman Burnett, if you grace us with your presence. Chairman Burnett, you're up. Your committee's up.
Sorry, thank you, Madam President and members of the council, reporting for your Committee on Pedestrian Traffic Safety for which a meeting was held on Monday, June 14, 2021. Before the committee, there were 370 items. There were 367 routine items that passed and three routine items that did not pass. I move for the passage of these items on the omnibus. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Next up, Committee on Special Events, Cultural Affairs, and Recreation. Chairman Spisato.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the City Council, reporting for your Committee on Special Events, Cultural Affairs, and Recreation, and also known as the Happy Committee, for which a virtual meeting was held on June 9, 2021. The committee recommends the passage of the following items. 2021-2153, an amendment of municipal code chapters 4-12 and 10-8 by modifying various sections and adding new section 10-8-331, further regulating independent farmers' markets. I move passage of this item by the first favorable roll call vote on the Committee of Finance and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider. SR2021-52, I'm sorry, SR21, a substitute resolution designating the month of October as Italian American Heritage and Culture Month in the city of Chicago. I move passage of this item by the first favorable roll call and vote of the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Madam President. This concludes my report.
Thank you, Chairman. Next up, the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Chairman Brookins.
Thank you, Madam President, reporting for your Committee on Transportation and Public Way, a meeting which was held on June 14, 2020. The following ordinances were passed by a majority of the members present. Item on page 1 was, I'm sorry. Page 2 includes one mayoral introduction ordinance. Pages 3 through 7 include 51 ordinances for grants of privileges introduced by local aldermen from the wards 3, 4, 8, 11, 25, 27 through 30, 32, 36, 39, 41 through 45, and 47 through 49. On page 8 includes two ordinances for canopies introduced by the local aldermen from wards 42 and 47. On pages 9 and 10 include 17 ordinances for miscellaneous items introduced by local aldermen from wards 10, 13, 19, 25, 26, 30, 36, 38, 44, and 49. Page 11 includes one transportation ordinance. Page 12 includes one vacation ordinance located in the 27th Ward. Madam President, if there are no objections, I move passage of these items by the last most favorable roll call vote on the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Madam President. That concludes my report.
Next up, the Committee on Workforce Development. Chairman Garza.
Thank you, Madam President and members of the City Council, reporting for your Committee on Workforce Development, which held a meeting on June 15, 2021. There were two items on the agenda. First, 02021-2182, Amendment of Municipal Code by adding new Title 6 regarding employer duties and worker protections or rights with associated modifications of Chapters 1-24, 1-25, and 2-172, an extending policy study time period of 2020 management ordinance regarding tipped wages. Substitute ordinance 2021-2182 was introduced and accepted by the committee. S02021-2182 was passed by unanimous voice vote. Hearing no objection, I move for the first most favorable vote on the Committee of Finance report and the corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Second, 02020-5778, Amendment of Municipal Code Titles 2 and 4 by modifying Section 2-25-200 and amending Section 4-6-180 regarding hotel businesses' duties toward layoff employees as to rehiring and hiring practices with self-expiring date of December 31, 2023. Substitute ordinance 2020-5778 was introduced and accepted by the committee. S02020-5778 was passed unanimous by unanimous voice vote. Hearing no objection, I move for the first most favorable vote on the Committee on Finance report and the corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
The chair recognizes Alderman Lopez.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Chairwoman Garza. You know, I want to, despite all the raucousness of this week, this is a perfect example of all of us working together. And I have to commend you, Madam President. Commend your administration and absolutely commend Chairwoman Garza on helping hotel workers. This is something that we've all felt very, it's been very personal for us, making sure that individuals whose livelihoods were put on hold almost 16 months ago are able to start right back up again as our economy reopens. This is an example of what moving Chicago forward should be about. Working together, this body coming together, people coming together, in business, labor coming together to do the right thing for our residents. And I thank you, Madam Mayor, for seeing this to its fruition, for ensuring that labor and the Hotel and Lodging Association came together. Because without that push, this would just be another item on the books. Today, it will be law, and we look forward to it. Residents have already come in asking, how does it work? How can we activate it? How can they benefit from it? The need is real, and it should not go unnoticed that it happened under your watch. Thank you.
Any other members who wish to speak on the matter?
I'd like to just say one thing. This is a very important piece of legislation. Thank you for recognizing me. And Lopez, I'd like to go on record as saying, throughout the almost nine months that you and I worked on this, you were somebody that I would work with again twice over. You were a dream to work with. You were a man of your word. You worked hard, right along with my staff and yourself. And I'd do it again anytime. So, just want to say that. Anybody else? I'm serious. Really great.
A pending motion.
Hearing no objection, I move for the first most favorable vote on the Committee on Finance report and the corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
So ordered.
All right, that concludes the report on Committee on Workforce Development, Madam President. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. Last but not least, Committee on Zoning, Landmark, and Building Standards. Chairman Tony.
Thank you, Madam President. Before I start my report, I want to wish you a happy pride to you and your family. So, since it is our month, right? So, all right. So, Madam President, members of the City Council, presenting a series of reports for your Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards, which held a meeting on June 22 of 2021. These reports are grouped for convenience. The following items were passed by a majority of the members present. Page 1 contains document number A2021-39, the reappointment of Jolene and Saul as member of the Zoning Board of Appeals. I move passage of this item by the last most favorable roll call vote of the Finance Committee and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider. Page 1 contains a direct mayoral introduction to the committee for the amendment of ordinance S02020-4101 and 02021-797 to modify the expiration date of a temporary emergency government authorized shelter. I move passage of these items by the same motion if there is no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Page 1 contains document number 02021-2154, the amendment of municipal code titles 4, 7, 13, 14A, 14B, 14R, and 15 regarding technical corrections to construction-related provisions and associated correction of City Council Journal of Proceedings of February 19, 2020. I move passage of these items by the same motion if there is no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Page 1 through 11 contains various map amendments in the 1st, 3rd, 4th, 6th, 11th, 12th, 13th, 21st, 25th, 27th, 29th, 32nd, 34th, 36th, 40th, 41st, 43rd, 44th, 46th, and 49th wards. I move passage of these items by the same motion if there is no objection, noting that Alderman Lopez moved no on the acceptance of all substitutes. Alderman Beal voted no on document number 02021-2027, and Alderman Hopkins voted no on document number 020205757. Page 11.
So with those noted exceptions, hearing no other objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Madam President. Page 11 contains the historical landmark designation[1747.82] contains the historical landmark designation for Morton Salt Company Warehouse Complex located at 1357 North Elston Avenue in the 27th Ward. Move passage of this item by the same motion if there is no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Page 11 contains two historical landmark fee waivers in the 3rd Ward. I move passage of this item by the same motion if there is no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Page 11 contains various large signs over 100 square feet in area, 24 feet above grade in the 3rd, 14th, 25th, 27th, 28th, 30th, 33rd, 36th, 42nd, 43rd, 44th, and 48th wards. I move passage of these items by the same motion if there is no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
And then, Madam President, I would like to suspend the rules for the immediate consideration of a resolution that I submitted in the honor of Mike Simon, who's with us today. And we're not going to read the resolution. I know most of you know him for his many years of service. And as I say, a man who needs no introduction. So I know that members of our council might want to say a few words.
Yeah, let's just take it one step at a time. Hearing no objection, the rules will be suspended for consideration of the resolution. Would you like to be the first or the last?
No, I think I'll be the last. Thank you.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Osterman.
Thank you, Madam President, and colleagues. I don't know what it's fitting or not, I don't even know what time it is, but it's Friday afternoon, but one of the outstanding workers of the city of Chicago is Mike Simon. On a day with divided roll calls, we're clapping mic, but Mike works, and he is one of many of the thousands of people that make up our city workforce that work day in, day out to make this place run. But Mike, above and beyond many people, has worked for many, many years with all of us, with many, many years with the Department of Transportation. He is an unbelievable, unbelievably dedicated Chicago worker. And we're happy for him and his wife Mimi, who also is a dedicated city worker and phenomenal individual. They raise a great family together. Great, great people. Mike and I have known each other for a long time. He started many years ago with my mom in special events. He's got a full head of hair still, but he looks great. But all of us are dedicated and really happy to be here in unison to thank him for his hard work for many, many years on our behalf and wish him nothing but happiness and health as he moves into the next chapter of his life. So, Mike, all the best.
Thank you, Alderman Osterman. The Chair recognizes Alderman Riley.
Thank you, Madam President. I too rise in support of this resolution. I've had the pleasure of working with Mike for the last 14 years too. And I know that Mike is definitely one of the most hardworking, dedicated people I've interacted with during my career here. And he's an incredible resource, and he's going to be impossible to replace. And so, Mimi and Mike, I wish you best in your future endeavors. But Mike, you're going to leave some very big shoes to fill for your replacement, and I hope I can still call and bug you from time to time. But good luck and enjoy your retirement. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Riley. The Chair recognizes Alderman Scott.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I too rise in support of this resolution. Mike and my family go way back. Harry talked about his mother in special events. Mike actually happened to be special events when my father was around, and then matriculated over to the Park District where he did great work there, and then also doing great work here. One of my most fond memories of you, Mike, and I don't know if you remember this, is this had to be a month into my tenure, and I was trying to figure out the menu, and I placed a couple of phone calls. I actually just happened to get to your phone, and you said, you know, who's speaking? I said, you know, Alderman Michael Scott Jr. He's like, oh, man, I have really good friends. Let me come out and help you. And, you know, without my prompting, you just came out and kind of showed me what was what through the menu, even though that was not your job and what you had to do. And so, I greatly appreciated that and will always respect you. And if there's anything you need in your travels, don't hesitate. Good luck to you and your wife. And like I said, Mimi, don't let him work too, don't let him take another job too quickly. Let him get home and get some rest for all the great years of service that he's done. Mike, thank you so much.
Thank you, Alderman Scott. The Chair recognizes Alderman Quinn.
Thank you, Madam President. I too rise in support of this ordinance. Mike, on behalf of the residents of the 13th Ward, thank you for everything. Congratulations on your retirement.
Thank you, Alderman Quinn. The Chair recognizes Alderman Cardenas.
Thank you, Madam President. I too join my colleagues and yourself in honoring Mike Simon. Mike Simon is Chicago through and through. The guy breathes all the air that is Chicago, his home. And Madam President, honestly, I don't want him to retire. I want him to keep helping this city thrive. We need his knowledge. He knows his way around the bureaucracy like no one that I have seen. And he knows how to get things done. We have a lot of work, a lot of infrastructure that needs to get done very quickly. Federal funding that's coming as well. We've got to find a way to keep Mike Simon around. I know people wishing him well. On the contrary, I wish you well, but I wish that you stay around, Mike. I hope you can do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Cardenas. The Chair recognizes Alderman Thompson.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President. I too rise in support of this resolution. To my friend Mike Simon, a terrific public servant, who is a credit to his family, who exemplifies the best of city employees. I thank you for your service. You know, you're a problem solver. I know my office worked closely with you. Anytime there was an issue, it was, you know, call Mike Simon. He'll figure it out. You know, the 30th anniversary of the Bulls winning their first championship reminds me of the old commercial, be like Mike. So whoever succeeds you and comes in, or however many people have to succeed you, they should remember to be like Mike. Because you were a problem solver. You helped us immensely in the 11th Ward. And I want to thank you and wish you well in your next endeavors. And I know you're an overachiever based on the woman sitting next to you. To Mimi, I wish you, thank you for allowing Mike to be here. I know you've got a long honeydo list for him to start getting to work. Forget this rest. And on behalf of the residents of the 11th Ward, I want to thank you, Mike, and wish you all the best and continue on. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Thompson. The Chair recognizes Alderman Lopez.
Thank you, Madam President. I was considering making a joke about DNPing your resignation and retirement, but I figured right now, it's the last thing people want to hear from me. But I do think, at least somebody laughed. Thank you. But I just want to say that, Mike, it has been a pleasure to call you a friend for well over two decades now. Going back to when I was just a spry little special events guy, who didn't pay attention too well to where I am now today. And being able to work with you in multiple departments and being thick and thin, it has been a wonderful honor and privilege to work with you in all capacities, and I wish you both well in your next chapter. Thank you, Madam President.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Raboyas.
Well said, my colleague Lopez. Just, Madam Chair, Madam President, I want to speak on the matter before us. Mike, I've been here close to 43 years, and I've known you for all the years that you've worked with the city of Chicago. And you're a truly dedicated person. You've never weighed down. You're always Johnny on the spot, Mike on the spot, even on weekends, and that's incredible. And I remember the times that you called, and we had special events going. But you truly deserved a break, and I don't think it's going to last long. I think you're going to take a break and go work somewhere else. But thank you for all the achievements that you've done, the work that you put out in the city of Chicago, and we greatly respect you, and you deserve it. Thank you. Enjoy it.
Thank you, Alderman. The Chair recognizes Alderman Gardner.
Yes, I too, thank you, Madam President. I too rise in support of this. Mike, thank you for all of your help, your dedication, your commitment to the city. Just recently, I, as usual, I reached out to you regarding a problem in the 45th Ward. And on that occasion, you didn't answer, and I was calling a couple other people, and you had called me back. And I had informed you there was an issue going on on a certain street, and you informed me, I'm sorry, I couldn't call you back. I just had my hip replaced. And I said, Mike, you know, you don't have to call me back, you know, and you did. And, you know, you had mentioned, we used to work out at the same gym together. You had said, you know, the importance of stretching. And I should have stretched more often, and I guess the good news is that I stayed true to that, as Gregory Pratt noted today. Thank you. And I'm still stretching, and I hope you continue to stretch for retirement and enjoy your retirement. And again, I thank you very much for all the work you've given to the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. The Chair recognizes Alderman Burnett.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Madam President. Also rise in support of this resolution. You know, I've known Mike and Mimi almost as long as Alderman Raboyas. I'm not as old as he is, but I've been knowing them for a while. Matter of fact, I feel like I grew up in government with you guys, you know, since we, before I was even Alderman. But working for the elected officials, you guys were always the people they would send us to to get things done. And Mike, you know, Reggie from my office really appreciates you. You always take care of us, not only when you were in special events, but also you took care of us just recently with the pandemic, when the restaurants needed to expand on the sidewalks in Old Town and also over on Fulton and Randolph Street. You know, you really helped those businesses to be able to find some kind of cushion to be able to sustain themselves. So you really helped a lot of families to be able to survive. I just want to thank you, man, because, you know, we would call you on the weekends, call you at night. Mimi, thank you for allowing him to do that with all of us. We really appreciate you, man, and we're going to miss you. And I feel the same way Alderman Cardenas feel. We need you right now with all of the things that's getting ready to happen with infrastructure. You know, I was just at a meeting the other day, and somebody said, oh, we're just calling Mike Simon about it. I don't think they knew you were getting ready to do what you're doing right now. And I was like, yeah, Mike could take care of it, you know. I just want to say thank you, man. You all are great public servants. You've done a fantastic job for the city of Chicago. I wish you well on your retirement and enjoy your life. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. The Chair recognizes Alderman Spazada.
Thank you, Madam President. I too support this resolution. As everybody else, Mike, we just really appreciate you. I can't tell everybody how many times I wrongfully called him. He wasn't the guy to call, but he always would say, he probably doesn't even realize he's been called so many times. But you always find out who the person is to handle or help me out. So really appreciate it, Mike. I wish you the best. I find it hard to believe you're retiring, but I know you're leaving the city. But best wishes to you. God bless you and your family. Thank you so much for everything. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman. The Chair recognizes Alderman Had.
Thank you, Madam President. Mike, we only met in person today for the first time, and I have not had the same privilege as many of my colleagues in working with you and Mimi for a very long time. But I can definitely say that in the short time that I've been here, you've been amazing. So deepest thank you and all the help that you've given us over the last couple of years, especially the last 18 months or so in the 49th Ward and the residents of the 49th Ward. Thank you for your service.
Thank you, Alderman. The Chair recognizes Alderman Smith.
Thank you, Madam President, and I promise to keep my comments under 10 minutes. Among all the other wonderful plot it's already said to Mike, I just want to share one short story. In the fall of 2016, a friend of mine called and said, Michelle, I'm part of a committee, and we're thinking of putting together, you know, a march for women. And like, do we need a permit? I said, oh, my goodness, we're going to have to go down to City Hall so you can understand what you have to do. And I called Mike Simon. And I brought the early organizers of the Women's March to Mike Simon, and he said, of course, I'll help. My wife and my daughters are going to Washington to march. So he was incredibly critical in making that march and the subsequent marches be as impactful as they were, helping the women's movement move forward, which was an important stride for showing respect for women everywhere. So thank you so much for everything you've done, Mike. You're a hero to me.
Thank you, Alderman Smith. The Chair recognizes Alderman Mitz.
Thank you, Madam President. I too like to rise and support Mike retirement. Mike, I'm really going to miss you, and I'll call you, and you could just tell me who else. Oh, and either I get your number wrong and wasn't looking for you, and then you helped me anyway. But you have been truly a blessing to us. I won't tell you retiring is a bad thing. I'm not going to be selfish, because there are other things that we can do once you put the work in. And I'm sure Mimi has a lot for you to do. That honeydo list, I can see a nod in the head, Mike. So you might want to reconsider before you leave out of here that the work that you did actually really was incredible, and we appreciate it. I'm glad to see you be able to make it to retirement. Knowing when to go is really truly a blessing rather than to go and not really get a chance to walk out on your own. So thank you, and God bless you and Mimi in your endeavors.
Alderman Mitz. The Chair recognizes Alderman Dahl.
Thank you, Madam President. Mike, I just wanted to take the opportunity to wish you the best on your next journey. And just to say to you, thank you for all of your help on the annual Bud Billiken Day Parade and the 3rd Ward and through the 20th Ward and the 4th Ward. We really appreciate you. And from all the work that you've done working on infrastructure projects in my ward, we very much appreciate your service. God bless you.
The Chair, thank you, Alderman Dahl. The Chair recognizes Alderman Harrison on this matter, correct?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I too rise to say congratulations to you. This journey for us has been more than two decades in various capacities. And, you know, you have always been there with the answers, even when I don't like them, you know, but I have respected them. And I respect you, and, you know, you leave on a high note. And so I wish you well in your next chapter. Congratulations. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Alderman Harrison. Any other members wish to speak on this resolution before I turn it back to Alderman Tunney? Alderman Tunney, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Madam President. So a lot has been said, Mike, so I'll just be brief. It's, I think what I admire most of you about you is your positive spirit. Whatever the issue is, you bring a positive attitude towards the task, and not a lot of city workers do that. So you're a special person that way. But as I said, problem solver, teacher, and a good friend. Good health to you and your family. Thanks for your service. I don't, were you going to say something? I was going to move passage of this resolution in the omnibus with maybe another round of applause, but.
So hearing no objection, this matter will be considered in the omnibus. Chairman Tunney, do you move to return to the regular order of business?
Madam President, I move to return to the regular order of business and to let people know that concludes my report.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderman Mitz.
Madam President, it was brought to my attention that I did not pass out your moratorium. So maybe I start to holy cuss, maybe I say, well, it's my time. But I'm going to make the correction for you all, so your moratoriums will get passed out. There were several, seven ordinance regarding moratoriums in the 6th, 11th, 16th, 21st, 25th, and the 47th. Madam President, I want to make amendment and move that these items also be passed by the same roll call as item number one on the Finance Committee and the same unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Madam President.
Chairman Harris. The Chair recognizes.
Who's my report?
Yes, I think you did say that previously. Chairman Harris, the agreed calendar.
Thank you, Madam President. I received from the Clerk, Anna Inum Valencia. Thank you, Madam President. I received from the Clerk, Anna Inum Valencia, a total of 128 items for the proposed agreed calendar consisting of congratulatory, commemorative, and tributary resolutions for the following Alderman: Alderman Hopkins, Alderman Hairston, Alderman Sawyer, Alderman Harris, Alderman Thompson, Alderman Quinn, Alderman Burke, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Coleman, Alderman Curtis, Alderman O'Shea, Alderman Brickens, Alderman Rodriguez, Alderman Wegaspack, Alderman Viegas, Alderman Nugent, Alderman Vasquez, Alderman Riley, Alderman Tony, Alderman Kapelman, Alderman Osterman, Alderman Hatton, Alderman Silverstein. I move these in the omnibus, Madam President.
Hearing no objection, so ordered.
Thank you.
Next up, New Business. Madam Clerk. Pardon me. The Chair recognizes Alderman Beal.
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, I move for temporary suspension of the rules for immediate consideration of an ordinance, calling for a legislative consul and parliamentarian for the city of Chicago.
Chair recognizes Alderman Riley.
Madam President, I believe my colleague is out of order.
Would you like to elaborate, sir?
Yes. While I also have an interest in the parliamentarian for this chamber, we do have the Open Meetings Act, which requires 48 hours' notice before we take up a matter before this body. And while our rules may not be clearly expressly prohibitive, the Open Meetings Act does take precedent.
Alderman Beal.
Madam President, our rules say that this body can accept a direct introduction into committee by a two-thirds majority of this council. And I motion for a roll call on my motion.
Well, can you speak to the issue that Alderman Riley indicated, which is regardless of what the body's rules are, state law and the Open Meetings Act does require 24 hours' notice for a matter. Hold on, let me just finish, sir. This body, 24 hours, or 48 hours, sorry, notice before any matter of substance is considered by this body. And this motion, which I don't believe was posted previously, is that correct?
This motion is being directly introduced to committee, and it can be adopted by a two-thirds vote on a roll call.
But I'm asking you if it's previously been noticed as part of the.
It doesn't have to be previously noted. If the body chooses to hear this by two-thirds vote, if it's before this body.
So the answer is no, that it has not been previously noticed in compliance with the Open Meetings.
It is being directly introduced to this body. And I'm asking for a two-thirds, a roll call vote to see if we can.
I'm just trying to get a simple answer. It was not previously introduced in compliance with the Opens Meetings Act, is that correct, sir? Alderman Riley.
Just so I'm clear, is the idea that this would be directly referred to committee or to be considered by this body today?
Considered by this body today.
Discuss referring things to committee.
The temporary suspension of the rules to be heard by this body today.
Okay. And again, Alderman, I'm not trying to be difficult here, but we do have a state law we need to respect related to the Open Meetings Act.
Our rules allow us to do direct to committee, I mean, direct to this body if so choose by a two-thirds majority.
Alderman Beal, I believe you're conflating two issues. The rules allow for direct introduction into a committee, which is distinct from direct introduction into the body for consideration.
We have.
Would you respond to that issue, sir?
Our rules allow us to do a direct to this body if this body so chooses to accept.
Can you point me to the rule that you're referring to? Because the rule that I'm familiar with says that the direct introduction into a committee, not to the floor of the.
I defer, and that's exactly why we need our own parliamentarian.
Well, I take your point. I believe that you already had your own lawyer. But the point is, I cannot abide by something that I believe, as a lawyer, would violate the Open Meetings Act. If what you're asking is a direct introduction to a committee, then I believe that you are correct. But if you're asking for a direct introduction to this body for immediate consideration, I do believe that that would be a violation of the Open Meetings Act.
I beg to differ. And again, that is exactly why I am trying to proceed with this ordinance, because I believe that we need our own legislative consul as well as our own parliamentarian.
Alderman Beal, I've considered and conferred with the parliamentarian as to your motion. I believe that you are incorrect and therefore out of order, and that consideration of this motion as a direct introduction on the floor would violate the Open Meetings Act.
Chair.
The question before the body is appeal of the ruling of the chair that this would be a violation of the Open Meetings Act. Let's proceed by roll call vote.
What's it yet?
And the question before you is whether or not the ruling of the chair, that direct introduction into the body as opposed to direct introduction to a committee, would violate the Open Meetings Act. So the question is whether or not the ruling of the chair shall be sustained. Madam Clerk.
Alderman Laspada.
No. The question before the body is the chair's ruling that direct introduction at this point into the body without consideration before the committee, without posting 48 hours ahead of time, would be a violation of the Open Meetings Act. That is the ruling of the chair. Alderman Beal is asked to appeal the ruling of the chair. So the question before the body is, shall the ruling of the chair be sustained that consideration of this matter now would violate the Open Meetings Act? Alderman Burnett, you have point of information?
Point of information, Madam Chairman. Could this item that Alderman Beal is interested in could be taken up in some other way rather than this way?
Yes, sir. I think the rules would provide that there could be a direct introduction into a committee for consideration, and then it would be brought before the body.
Thank you.
He could, and just to follow up, he could refer it to a particular committee today, like New Business, that we've already addressed. Any other questions before we go to a roll call vote?
I have a raised hand.
Oh, pardon me. Let me go to Alderman Hopkins and Sawyer and Carlos Rosa.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. I'm not sure Alderman Beal intended for this to be such a dramatic example of why we actually do need an officially designated parliamentarian. But I believe the operative phrase in the Open Meetings Act is final action. We would be in violation of the Open Meetings Act if we took final action on this matter. So final action does not preclude us from even discussing it. We can consider it. We can look at it. We can talk about it. We can send it to committee. We can do a lot of things. We just can't take final action on it. That would violate the Open Meetings Act. I think that's what Alderman Beal was intending to do, was to have a vote on it. We voted on it today. That would be construed as final action. Short of that, there's a lot of other things we can do. And therefore, I respectfully disagree with the ruling of the chair that the entire matter is out of order. It should be before us, and we can do everything except finally vote on it. Thank you.
And with respect to that, my understanding was that Alderman Beal intended for the body to take final action today. Clarification, Alderman Beal. Pardon me?
We can discuss it.
Are you intending for us, my understanding from your.
We can discuss it if the body so chooses.
So let's just be clear, so that the body understands exactly what your intent is. My understanding of your intent, and if I'm mistaken, please correct me, my understanding of your intent was to actually take, have the body take final action today on your motion, not merely to discuss it.
Madam Chairman, my intention was to bring this item before this body for discussion as we move forward.
Discussion, but not final action today?
Discussion as we move forward.
Again, clarification, can you?
I said discussion moving forward.
With that.
Madam Chairman, I motion to move my item to committee in the rules.
Now, the amendment is to move the matter to the Rules Committee. Is that correct? All right. That clarification, the ruling of the chair is the matter will be referred to Rules. Do you still wish to speak on, given that action? Alderman Lopez?
Thank you, Madam President. Two items. One, are we still in the middle of a vote?
We have, we started a roll call vote. Mr. Beal, Alderman Beal, pardon me, gave clarification in light of the comment from Alderman Hopkins.
Then if I, then if I may offer, Madam President, as an alternative for both, that we suspend the rules and convene as a committee of the whole to directly hear and receive this item today for discussion at this time.
It's the same issue, and Alderman Beal, unless he wants to change himself, has already indicated that he moves now, he's amending his initial motion, to move to direct the item to Rules. So I think that is now the bid and ask. And Alderman Beal, just for clarification, do you want to withdraw your request for a roll call vote?
Yes, Madam Chair.
All right. So he's withdrawing his motion for a roll call vote. The matter is now referred to the Rules Committee. I don't believe there's any further action that can be taken at this time. All right. Next item is New Business. Madam Clerk, please call the wards, beginning with the 50th. Please proceed.
Claims, free permits, license fee exemptions, which are referred to the Committee on Finance, zoning amendments, which are referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards, traffic regulations, traffic control signals and traffic signs, which are referred to the Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Safety, grants of privilege on and over the public way, which are referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way, an exemption from physical barrier requirements for commercial driveway alley access for parking facilities, which are referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alman Hatton has a proposed ordinance for Amendment of Municipal Code, Section 4-60-023, to allow additional packaged goods licenses on portion of West Morris Avenue, which is referred to Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alman Hatton also has a proposed ordinance for an honorary street designation as Honorary Bruno Rodey Way, which is referred to Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alman Osterman has a proposed ordinance for Amendment of Municipal Code, Section 4-60-022, to allow additional alcoholic liquor licenses on portion of North Clark Street, which is referred to Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alman Osterman and others have proposed ordinance for Amendment of Municipal Code, Sections 2-32-400, 2-32-440, and 2-32-450, to further regulate municipal depositories, which is referred to Committee on Finance. Alman Gardner has proposed ordinance for vacation of a portion of West Gunnison Street within the area bounded by West Ainsley Street, North LeMans Avenue, West Lawrence Avenue, and North Laverne Avenue, which is referred to Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alman Tuddy has a proposed ordinance for a one-time exemption or exception from the night game ordinance to allow the Chicago Cubs to hold concert at Wrigley Field on Thursday, September 16, 2021, which is referred to Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alman Smith has proposed ordinance for an honorary street designation as Honorary John Prine Way, which is referred to Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alman Riley has a proposed ordinance for Amendment of Municipal Code, Section 4-60-022, to disallow additional alcoholic liquor licenses on portions of State Street, Whacker Drive, Michigan Avenue, Monroe Street, Randolph Street, Dearborn Street, Conch Place, Lake Street, and Clark Street, which is referred to Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alman Riley also has a proposed ordinance for Amendment of Municipal Code, Section 4-60-022, to disallow additional alcoholic liquor licenses on various public ways within the 42nd Ward, which is referred to Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alman Riley also has a proposed ordinance for Amendment of Municipal Code, Section 4-60-023, to disallow additional packaged goods licenses on portions of Michigan Avenue, Monroe Street, State Street, Randolph Street, Dearborn Street, Conch Place, Benton Place, Lake Street, Whacker Drive, and Clark Street, which is referred to Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alman Riley also has a proposed ordinance for Amendment of Municipal Code, Section 4-60-023, to disallow additional packaged licenses on portions of various public ways within the 42nd Ward, which is referred to Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alman Riley also has a proposed ordinance for Amendment of Municipal Code, Titles 2, 3, 8, and 9, by modifying various sections and adding new sections to further regulate transportation network drivers and establish public chauffeur assistance fund, which is referred to Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alman Riley also has proposed orders for the issuance of permits for signed signboards at 303 East Whacker Drive and 937 North Rush Street, which are referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alman Napolitano has a proposed ordinance for honorary street designation as Michael A. Speciale Way, which is referred to Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alman Napolitano also has a proposed ordinance for an honorary street designation as St. Thicla Way, which is referred to Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alman Vasquez has a proposed ordinance for approval of a plan of street naming for east-west public alley within the block bounded by West Paul Morale Avenue, North Artesian Avenue, West Burman Avenue, and North Campbell Avenue, which is referred to Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alman Nugent and others have proposed ordinance for Amendment of Municipal Code, Chapter 4-8, by modifying Sections 4-8-010 and adding new Section 4-8-065 regarding requirements for single-use footwear, which is referred to Committee on Environmental Protection and Energy. Alman Viegas and others have proposed ordinance for Amendment of Municipal Code, Chapter 17-7, by adding a new Section 17-7-0563 regarding exemptions for social equity licenses within cannabis zone districts, which is referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alman Ramirez Rosa has a proposed ordinance for Amendment of Municipal Code, Sections 4-60-022 and 4-60-023, to disallow additional alcoholic liquor and packaged goods licenses on portion of various public ways within the 35th Ward, which is referred to Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alman Ramirez Rosa also has a proposed ordinance for submission of a public question by referendum to Chicago voters at the 2022 primary elections on whether the city of Chicago shall give commission overseeing Chicago Police Department created by Chapter 2-80 of Municipal Code, the authority over CPD budget, hiring, or firing of superintendent of police, and members of public board policies and union contracts, which is referred to Committee on Committees and Rules. Alman Rodriguez Sanchez has a proposed ordinance for Amendment of Municipal Code, Section 4-60-023, to allow additional packaged goods licenses on portion of North California Avenue, which is referred to Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alman Rodriguez Sanchez has a proposed ordinance for Amendment of Municipal Code, Section 4-60-023, to allow additional packaged goods licenses on portion of West Belmont Avenue, which is referred to Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alman Rodriguez Sanchez, Alman Hairston, and others have proposed order to call for the Corporation Council to submit legal written opinion regarding hiring of an independent parliamentarian, which is referred to the Committee on Committees and Rules. Alman Raboyes has a proposed ordinance for an honorary street designation as Julian Jumpin Perez Way, which is referred to Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alman Irvin has a proposed order to call for the Chicago Police Department to update Employee Resource E01-11 Secondary Employment Directives to remove prohibition of secondary employment in establishment where primary business of sale is intoxicating liquor, which is referred to Committee on Public Safety. Alman Irvin and Alman Sichu Lopez have a proposed ordinance for Amendment of Municipal Code, Section 4-60-023, to allow additional packaged goods licenses on portion of South Racine Avenue, which is referred to Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alman Burnett has proposed ordinance for an honorary street designation as President Elder Albert D. Tyson III Way, which is referred to Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alman Sichu Lopez has a proposed order for the issuance of a permit for a signed signboard at 1850 West 21st Street, which is referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alman Sichu Lopez also has a proposed ordinance for a vacation of public ways in the area bounded by West 21st Street, South Truth Street, West Surmac Road, and South Loomis Street, which is referred to Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alman Sichu Lopez and Alman Mitz have proposed resolution to call for federal government to commit to cancellation of all student debts, which is referred to Committee on Education and Child Development. Alman Sichu Lopez, Alman Rodriguez Sanchez, and Alman Smith have proposed resolution to call for the end of pretrial house arrest of human rights attorney Stephen Donzinger, and call on the U.S. Department of Justice to investigate Judge Louis A. Capman's violation of basic business and judicial processes, and call for President Biden administration to hold Chevron accountable for environmental crimes in Ecuador, which is referred to Committee on Health and. for environmental crimes in Ecuador, which is referred to Committee on Health and Human Relations. Alman Rodriguez has a proposed ordinance for an honorary street designation as Honorary Paul R. Montez Way, which is referred to the Committee on Committee Transportation and Public Way. Alman Brookins has a proposed ordinance for an Amendment of Municipal Code, Section 4-60-022, to allow additional alcoholic liquor licenses on portion of West 87th Street, which is referred to Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alman Brookins also has proposed ordinance for Amendment of Municipal Code, Title 9, by adding a new chapter, 9-103, entitled Scooter Sharing, which is referred to Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Two committees haven't been called, the Committee on Transportation and Public Way and the Committee on the Budget and Government Operations. The matters refer to Committee on Committees and Rules. Alman Brookins also has proposed orders for the issuance of permits for signed signboards at 117 West 87th Street and 8341 South Stewart Avenue, which is referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks and Building Standards. Alman O'Shea and others have opposed orders for establishment of rules and regulations for third-party food delivery services, which is referred to Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alman Lopez and others have opposed order to call on the Corporation Council to terminate any and all efforts against Anjanette Young and her legal team, which is referred to Committee on Public Safety. Alman Lopez and others also have opposed ordinance for Amendment of Municipal Code, Chapter 8-16, by modifying various sections regarding offenses by or against minors. Two committees haven't been called, the Committee on Human Relations and the Committee on Public Safety. The matters refer to Committee on Committees and Rules. Alman Quinn has a proposed ordinance for extension of designation of first, second, eighth, 17th, 18th, 26th, and 27th precincts of the 13th Ward as restricted residential zones prohibiting additional shared housing units and vacation rentals, which is referred to Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alman Salatski Garza has proposed ordinance for dedication to public ways in the area bounded by South Coronet Avenue, west, east, 122nd Street, South Chicago and South Western Railroad, and East 126th Street, which is referred to Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alman Salatski Garza also has a proposed ordinance for an honorary street designation as Kenneth J. Miyak Way, which is referred to Committee on Transportation and Public Way. And a proposed order for the issuance of refer for assigned signboard at 10532 South Indianapolis Avenue, which is referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks and Building Standards. Alman Harris has a proposed ordinance for Amendment of Municipal Code, Sections 4-60-022 and 4-60-023, to disallow additional alcoholic liquor and packaged goods licenses on portions of East 93rd Street, which is referred to Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alman La Spata has a proposed resolution for Amendment of City Council Rules of Order and Procedure by modifying Rules 37 and 42 to establish procedures for resolving committee disputes when two or more committees are called on proposed subject matters, which is referred to Committee on Committees and Rules. Alman La Spata also has a proposed order for Amendment of Municipal Code, Chapter 10-28 regarding public way use permits, requirements, and fees for special service areas, which is referred to Committee on Transportation and Public Way. And Alman La Spata and others have opposed orders for an annual appropriation ordinance, Year 2021 Amendment, within Fund 925 for various departments and grants, which is referred to Committee on the Budget and Government Operations. Your Honor, that... Also, there's an ordinance from Alman Vegas regarding cannabis restrictions. Alman, could you please clarify which committee you would like to refer to?
You already called it, Peter. You already called that one. Peter. Peter. Peter.
Correction, the matter has been referred to zoning. Your Honor, that concludes aldermatic introductions.
Pardon me? Sir, that item was actually previously called sometime before. I, I believe that your, your call is untimely. I'd ask the, perhaps the sponsor would entertain your motion, but the matter was already previously called.
The clerk, if I had heard the item, but... Been here a long time.
Alman Irvin, previously, there was a matter by Alman Vegas and others of an ordinance for Amendment of Municipal Code, Chapter 17-7, by adding a new Section 17-7-0563 regarding exemptions for social equity licenses within cannabis zone districts, which was recommended to be referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks and Building Standards.
I, I don't believe that your call is timely, sir. It was called sometime during the, the call of the wards. There was a question that came up at the end, which I think you raised, but the matter had previously been called.
Okay. Your Honor, that concludes aldermatic introductions.
Alderman Mitchell, for approval of his own journal.
Madam Chair, I am, Madam President, I am not aware of any corrections to the journals from May 26, 2021, or June 23, 2021, and move that both be approved by the affirmative vote of all the members present for the roll call to determine quorum.
There are no objections, so ordered, the motion is carried. Next up, unfinished business, Alderman Mitchell.
Madam President, I am aware of two items of unfinished business that were noticed pursuant to Rule 41. The first is a substitute ordinance regarding renaming Outer Lake Shore Drive. The second is the appointment of Celia Mesa as Corporate Counsel of the Department of Law. I defer to Chairman Brookins and Chairman Dow.
The, the chair recognizes Chairman Brookins.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to, at this point, defer to Alderman Moore regarding the substitute.
We're going to go to Alderman Moore first. Are you, Alderman Vazquez, do you wish to speak on this issue?
Item on the Rule 41. We had three, I had a Rule 41.
Alderman Vazquez, that will be taken up in the miscellaneous business section.
Thank you.
Alderman Moore.
Madam President, I would like to propose a substitute ordinance for this item. The substitute proposes the name Jean Baptiste Pointe du Sabre Lake Shore Drive. Copies of the proposed substitute have been distributed to all the members. I move for acceptance of this substitute for our consideration by the affirmative vote of all the members present for the roll call to determine quorum.
Ladies and gentlemen, the first step will be to determine whether or not the substitute ordinance will be approved by the body. It was properly noticed, is my understanding. So the first vote is to accept it, and if that's accepted, there'll be a subsequent vote on the substance of the ordinance. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman La Spata.
Aye.
Alderman La Spata votes aye. Alderman Hopkins.
Aye.
Hopkins is a yes. Alderman Dow.
Aye.
Alderman Dow is a yes. Alderman King.
Aye.
Alderman King is a yes. Alderman Hairston.
Aye.
Alderman Hairston is a yes. Alderman Sawyer. Alderman Sawyer. Alderman Mitchell.
Aye.
Mitchell is a yes. Alderman Harris.
Yes.
Harris is a yes. Alderman Beal.
Yep.
Beal is a yes. Alderman Salatski Garza.
Yes.
Salatski Garza is a yes. Alderman Thompson.
Aye.
Thompson is a yes. Alderman Cardness. Alderman Quinn. Alderman Quinn is a yes. Alderman Burke.
Aye.
Burke is a yes. Alderman Lopez.
Aye.
Lopez is a yes. Alderman Coleman.
Aye, yes.
Coleman is a yes. Alderman Moore.
Yes.
Moore is a yes. Alderman Curtis. I'm sorry, Alderman O'Shea.
Aye.
O'Shea is a yes. Alderman Taylor.
Yes.
Taylor is a yes. Alderman Brookins.
Aye.
Brookins is a yes. Alderman Rodriguez.
Yes.
Rodriguez is a yes. Alderman Tabarez.
Yes.
Tabarez is a yes. Alderman Scott. Scott is a yes. Alderman Sichu Lopez. Sichu Lopez is a yes. Alderman Maldonado.
Yes.
Maldonado is a yes. Alderman Burnett.
Yes.
Burnett is a yes. Alderman Irvin.
Yes.
Irvin is a yes. Alderman Talafaro.
Yes.
Talafaro is a yes. Alderman Raboyas.
No.
Raboyas is a no. Alderman Cardona. Cardona is a yes. Alderman Wagas Pack. Wagas Pack is a yes. Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez.
Yes.
Rodriguez Sanchez is a yes. Alderman Austin.
Aye.
Austin is a yes. Alderman Ramirez Rosa.
Yeah.
Ramirez Rosa is a yes. Alderman Vegas.
Yes.
Vegas is a yes. Alderman Mitz.
Yes.
Mitz is a yes. Alderman Soto.
Next, Soto is a yes.
Soto is a yes. Alderman Nugent.
Yes.
Nugent is a yes. Alderman Vazquez.
Yes.
Vazquez is a yes. Alderman Napolitano. Napolitano is a yes. Alderman Riley.
Yes.
Riley is a yes. Alderman Smith.
Yes.
Smith is a yes. Alderman Tunney.
Yes.
Tunney is a yes. Alderman Gardner.
Yes.
Gardner is a yes. Alderman Kapelman. Kapelman is a yes. Alderman Martin.
Yes.
Martin is a yes. Alderman Osterman.
Yes.
Osterman is a yes. Alderman Haddon.
Yes.
Haddon is a yes. Alderman Silverstein.
Yes.
Silverstein is a yes.
Sawyer is a yes.
Cardness is a yes. Sawyer is a yes.
The yeas are 48, the nays are 1. The motion to consider the substitute ordinance is granted. Alderman Moore.
If this the only discussion, I prefer to go last, but I'm hoping this, there's no other discussion. We hammered this out. For me, I was always taught, you, somebody can talk a whole lot and say nothing, and talk a little and say a whole lot. So let's just do the right thing. Madam President, I now move that we adopt the substitute ordinance renaming Outer Lake Shore Drive by roll call vote.
Madam Clerk. Alderman Riley.
Thank you, Madam President. I do think there are a couple of people who wanted to testify on this before it... Sorry, speak to the item before this... Sorry, it's been a long day before a vote's called. And I wanted to speak to it very briefly. We spent the better part of nine months discussing this issue to the exclusion of others, I would argue, at a time when the city is going through unprecedented challenges. And instead, we've been focused on naming streets. I can tell you that the feedback I've been getting about the proposed compromise is that it's a very, very long name, and that it could be even more confusing. Everyone here is going to vote their conscience and vote to do what they think is right. But I just wanted to remind folks that the city has done a lot to recognize Mr. Dusabel. We have a, a bridge named after him, Michigan Avenue Bridge, which I named. We have a harbor downtown named after Mr. Dusabel. We have a high school. We have a museum. We will have a park soon, too. And throughout the debate, we, we talked about other options to properly honor Mr. Dusabel, and he's certainly someone who deserves great distinction and honor. And other suggestions were, were thrown out there. One by Mayor, Mayor, sorry, Mayor Lightfoot, to rename the Riverwalk and have educational programming on the walk throughout the year. Alderman Hopkins and I suggested potentially renaming Millennium Park after Dusabel and his wife, Kitty Hawa. That wasn't accepted. But I know that there are passionate views on both sides of the issue. My experience from my constituents is they prefer to keep the name Lake Shore Drive. And a recent citywide survey suggests that a lot of folks feel that way, regardless of where they live in the city. So I know we're all going to vote the way we think we should, but I would just encourage my colleagues to consider the popular opinion of Chicago residents, given that we're all elected to represent them here. And that said, I will stop talking now, but I wanted to explain how my position has evolved on this and why unfortunately I can't support this compromise today. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman. The chair recognizes Alderman Hopkins.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. I want to begin just by correcting the record for some comments that were made during the public three-minute testimony today with regard to some buildings that may or may not have to change their address. The fact of the matter is, most residential buildings that have a Lake Shore Drive address are on the inner drive. We're not proposing to rename the inner drive. We're proposing to rename the outer drive. All those buildings on the inner drive are unaffected by this. However, there are six buildings that are not on the inner drive. They are on Outer Lake Shore Drive. Their address is an Outer Lake Shore Drive address. There's a seventh building that's prepared for construction as well. They would be in the unfortunate position of having an address that no longer matches the road that they're on. If we change the name of the outer drive, they would be compelled to change their address as well if they wanted to have their address match the name of the road they're on, which I think we all agree is what an address is for. So I needed to state that, that is a fact, that is not my opinion. And for those who are saying otherwise, I'm afraid you're incorrect. And those six buildings would have an impact on this proposal. I appreciate the spirit of compromise, and, and I think this is actually somewhat of an improvement over the original proposal. But as Alderman Riley mentioned, there's an alternative proposal that I find much more compelling and much more attractive, and that is to rename Millennium Park for Jean Baptiste Pointe du Sabre and to install some type of interpretive artwork, you know, perhaps a statue or a sculpture in Millennium Park to Dusabel, that would vastly exceed the current bust that exists along the river that has been pointed out is, is unacceptably small and not really very noticeable. It's not in a location where a lot of people see it. So to rename Chicago's premier downtown park and to add a statue or other monument to him in that location, in my opinion, vastly exceeds the honor and the recognition that would be given to him by renaming Lake Shore Drive. And I will tell you, I have not heard a single person, since I've been talking about this idea, oppose it. Everyone that has heard this idea, including on social media, where it's now being out there, supports it. So this brings us together as a city. This unites us, rather than the proposal to rename Lake Shore Drive, which divides us. And that, ladies and gentlemen, is not in keeping with the legacy of Jean Baptiste Pointe du Sabre. What do we know about him? There's some things we do know about him. Unfortunately, the written record from that period of time in our history is incomplete, but we know some things, we know some important things. We know he chose for his wife a member of the Potawatomi tribe, Kitty Hawa. And we know, as a member of that tribe, as a Potawatomi, she spoke a language in the Algonquin dialect, which means there were at least six or seven other nearby tribes throughout what is now the Midwest, that the language was close enough that she could have communicated with those various tribes. We know Dusabel is a, is an immigrant from Haiti, spoke French. So between the two of them, there was literally no one in this area that they couldn't communicate with. They were a symbol of unity. They brought together disparate tribes and disparate interests and people that didn't have anything else in common at the time. That's probably the main reason why Dusabel was so successful as a trader for the 10 or 12 years that he lived here in what is now Chicago. In that spirit of unity, I ask you, ladies and gentlemen, to please accept a much better idea for this tribute to Chicago's founder, the first non-Indigenous resident, and his wife, who lived here before any of the settlers, from France, from Haiti, from England, from anywhere, finally came and called this land home. It would bring us together, and it would bring due honor to the founder of this area, who certainly deserves more recognition than is got. I urge you to vote no on this and support a plan to rename Millennium Park and install a statue in his honor. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. The chair recognizes Alderman Ramirez Rosa.
Thank you, Madam President. I rise in support of this measure because it is well past time for Chicago to properly recognize our city's first Black and immigrant resident, one of Chicago's founding fathers. Study after study has found that a lack of positive representation of Black people in the public sphere has a real-world impact on Black children and Black children's educational outcomes. So much more must be done to end systemic racism, like ensuring reparations for the descendants... So much more must be done to end systemic racism, like ensuring reparations for the descendants of American slaves. But properly honoring John Baptiste Point Dusabel is a small but important step towards addressing racial injustice. There's so much that we as a society must do to address white supremacy. And I'm so shocked to see that there's so much that we must do within this body to address white supremacy. A city that's one-third black, a city that's two-thirds black and brown, a city that has this many black and brown leaders should not have to face this much white supremacy in this body. That some white aldermen would decide that they get to tell the Black Heroes Matter movement what they should accept and the manner in which our city should honor John Baptiste Point Dusabel. That money would be spent, that so much time and effort would be spent to derail this effort that is being led from the grassroots by black leaders, that is white supremacy at play here. So I hope that we pass this measure. I have no doubt that if John Baptiste Point Dusabel were white, this change would have been made long ago. The only thing controversial about renaming Lake Shore Drive for Chicago's black founding father is how long it's taken and the opposition it's received from representatives of the most affluent and white areas of our city. So I want to applaud the Black Heroes Matter for continuing this struggle, for continuing this fight, for not backing down in the face of white supremacy. And I want to let everyone in this city know that we honor black heroes, that we uplift our black and immigrant founding father, and that we give him the honor and respect that he deserves. And let this vote today be a message that in the city of Chicago, we're tackling white supremacy, that we're taking small steps towards rectifying major, major wrongs. And let this lay the foundation towards us doing even greater things. Because if we as a city can't even decide that we should rename our main front road for our city's black founding father, then what hope do we have for winning reparations? What hope do we have for addressing the systemic wrongs that led to so much inequity and injustice? Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. The Chair recognizes Alderman King.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President. I wholeheartedly stand with my colleague in support of this ordinance. "What's in a name?" Shakespeare asks. "That which we call a rose by any other name would smell as sweet." Names have significance, as the renaming of Lake Shore Drive has surely shown us. Names have significant meaning. It's one of the first things we do when we welcome a child to this world. We painstakingly choose a name that will have significance, that will reflect on our family, that will be a reflection for years to come. It's been argued not to change Lake Shore Drive because it's so iconic. I argue just the opposite. Let's change it because it is so iconic. Let's be leaders, as the city council did when renaming South Parkway to King Drive, August 1st of 1968, shortly after King's assassination in April of that same year. The city council renamed South Parkway to Dr. Martin Luther King Drive, and subsequently, other King Drives popped up all across the country. However, at the time, downtown streets were floated to celebrate this noble laureate. Alderman Leon Dupree and others felt that having a King Street that only ran in the black community was demeaning because King was a national hero. But the current mayors and others wouldn't have it. And so King Drive was relegated to the black part of town, as it is in most cities. So why are we spending so much time on this issue when we have bigger fish to fry, gun violence, COVID recovery, true racial disparity? First of all, we can do both. We can chew gum and walk, it isn't either-or. But really, names are important. I've seen the pride from the recognition and naming of Ida B. Wells Drive. And in other big cities, they treat their founders with significance. Cadillac is honored in Detroit, Pitt in Pittsburgh, Cleveland in Cleveland. In fact, John Kinsey, who bought Dusabel's house, even has a street named after him here. What we choose to celebrate or not celebrate tells a story and helps to shape our conscience. I hope our story is that while God had us on a serious timeout during COVID, that we heeded His message, driving home who is really essential, where the true disparities lie, and that black lives do indeed matter, that we chose to honor our great man whose legacy has been marginalized because he was black. I hope our story is that we chose a name that's about racial healing and reckoning, that we chose to honor our founder, who happens to be black and of Haitian descent. So I ask, what's in a name? History, education, pride, healing, racial reckoning, and hopefully unity. Thank you, Madam President.
Are there any other members? Are there any other members who wish to speak on this matter? Alderman, can you please turn on Alderman Moore's microphone? Alderman Moore.
Madam President, I just want to just add, because I did, and part of me was just saying, let's just do the right thing. But I want to thank, first of all, the Black Heroes Matter Coalition, and other forty different organizations, and other people that chimed in and had their voices heard. I want to thank my colleague, Alderman Sophia King, for standing strong as a co-sponsor on this, as well as other caucus members who encouraged me, but even some caucus members and some council members who disagreed with me and sat down with me, like Harry Osterman and Patrick Daly-Thompson, people who, you know, have the true spirit of want to do right. You may not get everything that you want sometimes in life. And I learned in purchasing that sometimes when it's a win-win. And I just want us to just do the right thing here. And I ask my colleagues to vote yes on this measure, and let's move forward. Thank you, Madam President.
Alderman Moore, do you have a motion?
Yes, a motion that we call the roll on this item.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Laspada. Alderman Laspada is a yes. Alderman Hopkins.
No.
Hopkins, a no. Alderman Dow.
Yes.
Dow is a yes. Alderman King.
Yes.
King is a yes. Alderman Hairston.
Yes.
Hairston is a yes. Alderman Sawyer.
Aye.
Sawyer is a yes. Alderman Mitchell. Mitchell is a yes. Alderman Harris.
Aye.
Harris is a yes. Alderman Beal.
Yep.
Beal is a yes. Alderman Zlowski Garza.
Yes.
Zlowski Garza is a yes. Alderman Thompson.
Aye.
Thompson is a yes. Alderman Cardness. Alderman Quinn. Quinn is a no. Alderman Burke.
Aye.
Burke is a yes. Alderman Lopez.
Aye.
Lopez is a yes. Alderman Coleman.
Yes.
Coleman is a yes. Alderman Moore.
Yes.
Moore is a yes. Alderman Curtis. I'm sorry, Alderman O'Shea.
No.
O'Shea is a no. Alderman Taylor.
Yes.
Taylor is a yes. Alderman Brookins.
Aye.
Brookins is a yes. Alderman Rodriguez.
Yes.
Rodriguez is a yes. Alderman Tabarez.
Aye.
Tabarez is a no. Alderman Scott. Scott is a yes. Scott. Bar- Tabarez, yes, no? Correct, I'm correcting him.
Tabarez is a no.
Alderman Tito Lopez. Tito Lopez is a yes. Alderman Maldonado.
Yes.
Maldonado is a yes. Alderman Burnett.
Yes.
Burnett is a yes. Alderman Irvin.
Yes.
Irvin is a yes. Alderman Talafaro.
Yes.
Talafaro is a yes. Alderman Raboyas.
No.
Raboyas is a no. Alderman Cardona.
No.
Cardona is a no. Alderman Wagas Pack.
Yeah.
Wagas Pack is a yes. Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez.
Yes.
Rodriguez Sanchez is a yes. Alderman Austin.
Yes.
Austin is a yes. Alderman Ramirez Rosa.
Yes.
Ramirez Rosa is a yes. Alderman Vegas.
Yes.
Vegas is a yes. Alderman Mitt. Mitt is a yes. Alderman Soto.
Next Soto is a no.
Soto is a no. Alderman Nugent.
No.
Nugent is a no. Alderman Vasquez.
Yes.
Vasquez is a yes. Alderman Napolitano.
No.
Napolitano is a no. Alderman Riley.
No.
Riley is a no. Alderman Smith.
No.
Smith is a no. Alderman Tunney.
No.
Tunney is a no. Alderman Gardner.
No.
Gardner is a no. Alderman Kapelman.
No.
Kapelman is a no. Alderman Martin.
Yes.
Martin is a yes. Alderman Osterman.
Aye.
Osterman is a yes. Alderman Haddon.
Yes.
Haddon is a yes. Alderman Silverstein.
No.
Silverstein is a no.
On the motion to change Lake Shore Drive to John Baptiste Point Dusabel Lake Shore Drive, the yeas are thirty-three, the nays are fifteen. The motion capacity. Alderman Thompson on the motion for reconsideration.
Move to reconsider the vote.
All those in favor of the motion for reconsideration signify by saying aye. All those opposed say nay.
No.
The nays have it, the motion for reconsideration is denied. The Chair recognizes Chairman Dow.
Thank you, Madam President. I have one item that I noticed up pursuant to Rule 41. That's the approval of the appointment of Celia Mesa as Corporation Counsel for the Department of Law, which was deferred and published and appears in the Journal of Proceedings of June 23rd, 2021, as A2021-59. I will yield the floor so members can speak on this appointment if they wish.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Maldonado.
Thank you, Madam President. I stand in support of this nomination. Like I said, two days ago, I think that this is a historic moment in which we are about to cast a vote to appoint the first Latina ever as Corporation Counsel for this great city of Chicago. This is a great sense of pride to me as a Latino City Member of the City Council, and I hope it represents the same sense of pride to all of our Latino members in these chambers. So with that, I gladly support your nomination, Madam Mesa, and I hope that we can vote very soon on your appointment. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. The Chair recognizes Alderman Vegas.
Thank you, Madam President. I also stand to be associated with this appointment. When you heard some of the folks calling in testifying on behalf of Celia, both professionally and from an association standpoint, you could tell that there's a lot of respect for her and her product that she produces. And I look forward to working with her as she works on defending the city in a corporation. But in our discussions, we've also had about diversifying the department and making sure that outside council minority women-owned firms are part of that process. And she was astounded, I mean, she was basically saying, absolutely, that's what I'm about. And I think that's the type of commissioner and corporation counsel that I'm looking forward to working with to make sure that our communities are participating in that. So I just wanted to stand up and say congratulations, and I look forward to working with you as you defend this great city and you defend all of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. The Chair recognizes Alderman Cardona.
President, I stand here to support this nomination or this appointment because we need someone that's going to stick up for us. And also, she has twenty-five years' experience in the public sector, which gives us, gives the support for her to do her job, and also that she will be the first Latina holding this position, which I greatly respect. And also, she's looking to be, to show equality within the, within her, within the Corporation Counsel. So I stand here supporting her appointment, and I yield my time. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. The Chair recognizes Alderman Smith.
Yes, Madam President. I also want to speak in favor of this nomination. Ms. Mesa has an incredible background, having been a former federal prosecutor, an in-house lawyer, a government lawyer, and has brought all those varied experiences to bear in service of our city. And one thing has remained unwavering throughout that, a strong commitment to ethics and trying to do what is right. And trying to do the right thing is sometimes very difficult in the law. There are a lot of things that are involved when you are in the middle of all that. And that's why I think she'll make an excellent Corporation Counsel. I just want to add a word from an old associate of mine, former, former Chief Judge of the Northern District of Illinois here in Chicago, Ruben Castillo, who I worked with many years ago. And he wanted to share, asked me to share, that he was strongly supporting the nomination of Celia Mesa as the Corporation Counsel. He states that Ms. Mesa is extremely qualified to serve in the position based on her overall legal career and public service to our community. Ms. Mesa appeared before me, meeting Judge Castillo during his twenty-five years on the federal bench. She always represented her clients within the highest ethical standards. Her advocacy for her clients' interests should never be weighed against her personally. Ms. Mesa's long and varied legal careers truly deserving of a historic confirmation to serve the citizens of our great city. Thank you, Judge Castillo. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderman Lopez.
Thank you, Madam President. I, too, rise in support of Ms. Mesa. What we did Wednesday, the defer and publish of this nomination, was not about her credentials, was not about her qualifications. To be perfectly honest, it wasn't about you. It was about a law department that was revictimizing Anjanet Young and about calling back to the forefront that situation that so horrified the entire city of Chicago. A situation where a black woman had to stand naked because the wrong house was raided. I'm not going to rehash that because we already know what happened. But what we want to see is resolution. What we want to see is, as you yourself had said, Madam President, Ms. Young made whole. And for the City Council to not only bring this issue back, but to also have an order directing the department to address this matter. You will be the one, Ms. Mesa, to carry that out, to bring resolution that is appropriate to Ms. Young. And what we do is not without precedent, just so we are all clear. Because in 2005, August of 2005, this very body introduced an order to pull back the law department when it was revictimizing the young children accused of murdering Ryan Harris, a crime they could not physically possibly have committed, but the law department was full-on in the wrong direction. This body had to step up. This body had to remind the law department who they worked for, and this body led the charge. Twenty-plus years later, we will do it again. We will push to ensure, under your leadership, that we do right by our citizens, that we do right by Ms. Young. And I know that that message is not lost on you today. It was not lost on anyone Wednesday. And I know that my colleagues will ensure that it is not lost on anyone tomorrow. Thank you, Madam President.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Tito Lopez. Pardon me.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Madam President. I think it's, I hope, a day of change in the city of Chicago where we cannot talk only about representation, which we do need, but we also need systemic change. And I think it's critical in this time that we change some of the practices that unfortunately we saw under the previous Corporation Counsel. Directly, my community more than anything else has been affected by poor decisions made without even consultation with the local officials. I do hope and I feel optimistic that under honorable Mesa, we will have a change. A change that is not only about representation, but a change that means changing practices, changing the way- changing the way that we interact with one another. We gotta respect the rule of law, but also, we have to respect the right to the process that oftentimes has failed. I do hope that under the new administration and the Corporation Counsel, under the lead of a Latina Corporation Counsel, we see a resolution to a very tragic and concerning case with Anjanet Young. And we hope that we see a much different relationship between the council members and Corporation Counsel, ones that is not only respectful, but in the spirit of collaboration and the spirit of service to the people in the city of Chicago. So a rising support and my hope and my urgent call for not only changes of representation in the city of Chicago, but changing of practices that bring us together for the sake of people across the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. The chair recognizes Alderman Thompson.
Thank you, Madam President. I too rise in support of this nomination and I, I just wanted, I wasn't going to speak, but I, I felt like I, I wanted to get up and say, I, I know there's, my colleagues are very passionate in talking about some of the issues, and there'll be plenty of time, and I'm sure you'll handle those issues. But today is about you and your family who's sitting next to you and how proud they must be for, for your accomplishments, for what you're going to do, and we know that. And this is a day to celebrate. I think the mayor made an excellent choice. You're familiar with this office. You're familiar. I see a former corp counsel here, sitting with you as a mentor and a friend. And I, I know you'll, you've got a lot of work to do, if you've noticed in the last two days. But I think with parliamentarians and other issues, there'll be plenty of time for that. I just wanted to stand up and say, I know I was in committee. I was impressed with your resume, impressed with your experience, especially clerking for one of the greatest defensive tackles ever played in the NFL, Alan Page, who was a former Bear. But really, it's about you and your family, and I just want to say congratulations. Welcome, and we look forward to working with you.
Alderman Moore.
President, I stand up in support of this nomination. Sometimes you, as I say, what comes from the heart reaches the heart. You can talk to someone and really get a good feeling about them. And what you want about people is that their direct honesty and our conversation and everything, I truly believe you. And I know you're going to do a good job. Thanks for asking, I mean, answering the questions that would ask, but even going over and beyond. You just, it just wasn't the snippets. And as I looked at your record, it's impeccable. And so again, Madam President, you've done a great job in making another great selection to help this city move forward. And I totally look forward to working with you and I'm hoping that we can do, continue to do better in our city. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Alderman Moore. The chair recognizes Alderman Irvin.
Thank you, Madam President. Again, congratulations, Ms. Mesa, on your selection and appointment to the Office of Corporation Counsel. This is definitely a historic day for members of the Latino community. One thing that impressed me was your candor in our conversations as it came to a bunch of issues that we, we as a city will face. And again, if you are unwilling to jump in and do the job that as a lawyer to protect not only us as a council, but all of us as the city of Chicago, then you wouldn't be doing your job. So we want you to do the best to your ability to defend and protect us all and work with compassion as relates to cases that require such. And again, congratulations and thank you for joining, and you sure you still want to do this, right? Very well.
The chair recognizes Alderman Beal.
Thank you, Madam President. I too rise to support this nomination. You know, I was kind of wavering which way I was gonna go, but when I saw you brought the heavy hitter, Mara, with you, I knew I had to vote for you. So best of luck to you, and we look forward to working with you. Thank you.
Any other members wish to speak to this aside from?
Yes, Madam President.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. The chair recognizes Mike Rodriguez, and then we'll go to Dow, then we'll go to Gardner.
Thank you, Lori Lightfoot. It's a, one thing I would say is I agree with a couple of my colleagues who are seeking justice out of this position. I think it's very important for us to treat our constituents and the citizens of Chicago with the due respect that they deserve. I think it's very important, particularly in the instance that's been brought up, that we bring justice to folks who have been so wrongly served justice. Today, however, is a day to recognize excellence, to recognize a Latina who's gonna break the glass ceiling. The fact is that I spent the better part of my elected career now doing as much as I can to bring proper representation to various forms of government, particularly to the law, whether it be supporting judges for office or attorneys to be in very important positions to adjudicate things. We need to make sure that we have the proper representation at the table, people who've come from specific experiences that you do, Attorney Mesa. And I'm very proud to stand in support of you in this position. I'm very proud that we have another appointment of a strong Latinx leader in our community. And I think you will do great things, and I expect that of you, and we will all hold you to that bar. Thank you so much, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman. The chair recognizes Alderman Gardner.
Rise in support of this. Thank you, Madam President. I too rise in support. I want to congratulate you, you know, as, as representative from the Latinx community. Congratulations, and also a representative from the Forty-Fifth Ward. Very, you make us very proud. So good luck, and we hope to have a long working relationship.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Alderman Cardenas.
Thank you, Madam President. We are reliving Wednesday. I, I want to say that what happened Wednesday was not well received in the Latino community. I was getting my haircut yesterday, and the topic of conversation was what transpired with the individuals and older persons that defer and published. They, they saw it as a slap in the face, the many immigrants who represent our communities and have done all they could to send their sons and daughters to school so they can better themselves and have a better future and be just like Celia Mesa, someone who rose through the ranks, someone who worked hard, someone who did all the things that someone would like a daughter to do. And for those that seek justice, you don't do unjust things. And what happened Wednesday was completely unjust. And that's what people in this city, at least in my community, saw it, and they will not forget. Celia Mesa, hater dues. Peloton High School, University of Illinois, University of Iowa College of Law, clerking with the best, working for the best with Mara Georges of many years, leading this city, learning everything she could to make and represent us the best. And I know she will do that. She's going to fight and doing her fiduciary responsibility to protect the taxpayers of this city, to protect us, each and one of you. And that's why, to me, I was so upset what happened to her. In seeking justice, you did a terrible thing to somebody else. They had nothing to do with that, with that case. Many in the community, the Hispanic Lawyers Association, astounded that on Wednesday, we had the opportunity to create history by confirming the first Latina to serve as Corporation Counsel in this city. This is per their letter. Alderman Raymond Lopez and Alderman Janet Taylor deferred her confirmation, citing injustice. As officers of the court, we understand the importance of seeking justice for all and recognizing the many issues that are plaguing our city. Yet we stand with Celia, an experienced attorney with a history of excellence in the law. Dedication to public service is in her veins. Commitment to assisting the most vulnerable in our communities where she comes from. Celia is a skilled attorney, more than twenty-five years of experience in the areas of labor and employment law, legal ethics, especially ethics, corporate compliance, and investigations. She has served in the Criminal Division of the U.S. Attorney's Office, where, Ms., Ms. President, you served as well. This personal attack on Celia, her proven record of excellence and her distinguished career is unacceptable today, tomorrow, and forever. The Hispanic Law Association, bar associations, stand with Celia and her family in full support of her confirmation as the first Latina Corporation Counsel in the city's history. And I will end there because not, nothing more needs to be said. Thank you.
The chair recognizes Alderman Vascas.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I didn't plan on speaking. I thought we were gonna go forward with this. And then our colleague just couldn't help himself. Celia, I, I want to apologize to you because we were gonna have a nice moving forward to make sure you were appointed, and I want to make sure that you and your family understand that. You are our sister as a Latina, and I want to make sure that's clear. Anjanet Young is also our sister. So when I hear about what our colleague might have heard at a barber shop, and I'm bald, so I haven't been to a barber shop in a while, that's not representative of our community. And what I refuse to accept here in this council is more division between black and brown. We are not here for that. You want to know why we don't get police accountability figured out? Why we don't figure out so many different things when we have two-thirds of a majority here in the council? It is because we keep dividing each other by color and making comments like that are an embarrassment to this council and this city. And I refuse to stand here silent among that. So I understand that that was enough to say. I agree with you. It's enough. Please let's continue. I am terribly sorry we interrupted the appointment to have this conversation. We are family. We are all family, including Anjanet Young. Let us please proceed with less of these tricks.
Chair recognizes Alderman Taylor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. When this was DP, this was nothing to do with Ms. Mesa. And I've said that to her over the phone. I've texted to her. And I've said it to other colleagues and coworkers. But the thought that I have a right to do something, and I did it to bring attention to something that we all said, and that's the mayor, that's the superintendent, and all the women in this caucus that said was wrong under all circumstances. And I brought attention to it, and I'm, I'm attacked forward, speaks volumes to who some of you people are. It honestly does. And at the end of the day, an attack on any woman is wrong at the end of the day. And this was never about this appointment, period. I've said it. I'll say it again. I've had to explain to my community what happened between myself and Mayor Lightfoot, and I have. And I'm not going to apologize ever for standing up for a black woman. And if you got a problem with that, you got the wrong job. At the end of the day, Ms. Young is one of us. So is this appointment. She is no different. This was not a disrespect to the Latinx community, not at all. And the thought that you thought it was okay to stand up and attack a woman again. So black women are expected to fix it and make it right, but we get attacked for it? You got a lot of nerve standing up there, and it's not your first or second time attacking us in this council. Stop calling me an activist. I'm an organizer. I'm here to do the work of my community, and I'm gonna do it at all costs, and whoever don't like it, too bad. I apologize to the young lady who was being appointed. This was never about you. But at the end of the day, if we remain silent on the things that matter, we might as well pack it up and leave. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Alderman. The chair recognizes Alderman Riley.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to call the question.
Thank you, Alderman. I believe that Alderman Dow would like to speak.
Yes, thank you. I want to turn it back to the moment the spotlight's on you, Cecilia Mesa. I want to thank you for your appearance before the Budget Committee. I think we found you to be a breath of fresh air. You are a straight shooter, clear communicator, and someone who is not afraid to reach out to the members of this body. And so I want to say I support this nomination, Mayor, and I move passage of Ms. Mesa's appointment by the affirmative vote of all members present for the roll call to determine quorum.
Hearing no objection, so ordered.
Thank you.
Corporation Counsel.
And if I may, Corporation Counsel Mesa. Known you for twenty-five plus years, from our early days at the U.S. Attorney's Office. Members of the body, what I can promise you is that what you find is a lawyer's lawyer, one who will call balls and strikes, who will tell you what she believes in her best judgment, the law and the facts are. Sometimes clients agree with that, sometimes they don't. But you will never find her cutting corners, doing anything other than being a lawyer and telling you what her best advice is on the question that is presented to her. I'm honored that she has agreed to serve, first as mayor's counsel, and now in this challenging but rewarding role as Corporation Counsel. I thank former Corporation Counsel Mara Georges, not only for being here, but for being a friend and mentor to Celia over so many years. I thank her brother, Rick Mesa, another former AUSA and lawyer of longstanding and well-regard for being here with her. I'm most appreciative for her daughter, Sydney, who was a superstar, a straight A student at Lane Tech, for being here to witness her mother's ascendancy. And I know her mother, Candy, is watching. A migrant worker who toiled in the fields to make a better life for her kids.
Come to the cap. Ladies and gentlemen, we have a few more items of business to finish, and then we will adjourn. Next up is miscellaneous business. Alderman Mitchell.
Madam President, I am aware that one motion to discharge the Committee on Public Safety was filed with the clerk. But I have been informed that the sponsors do not wish to proceed with the motions at this time.
Alderman, the chair recognizes Alderman Vascas.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I think we've seen enough today in this council as far as things that are either subtly or blatantly racist. So I, I, I just want to say I am moving to withdraw the motion in deference to the coalition and colleagues that are seeking to move forward ECPS and police accountability. And it is my ask of the Public Safety Committee and its chairman to actually hold a hearing on it in July so we can vote on it and to stop having people in that committee be the gatekeepers to democracy so we can actually vote on police accountability after it being stalled for years. That way, we don't have to come back here next month to run rules of Rule forty-one and actually have the whole council vote. We prefer to actually discuss it, let it move forward. Thank you very much.
Alderman Mitchell, the date and time of the next meeting.
I have provided an ordinance to the clerk, setting the date and time for the next meeting of the city council. Madam President, will you please have the clerk read the ordinance?
Madam Clerk, please read the ordinance.
Be it ordained by the City Council of Chicago, Section One, that the next regular meeting of the City Council of Chicago shall be held on Wednesday, July twenty-first, twenty-twenty-one, beginning at ten a.m. in the City Council Chamber on the second floor and City Hall, one twenty-one North LaSalle Street, Chicago, Illinois. If prior to then, the Commissioner of Health issues a writ of determination that an in-person meeting of the City Council is not practical or prudent due to COVID-nineteen, the next regular meeting of the City Council in accordance with applicable law shall be conducted by video conference and shall provide for more remote participation, remote viewing by members of the public. Any such written determination posted on the City Clerk's website, along with amended meeting agenda indicating the meeting will be conducted by video conference by ten a.m. on Monday, July twenty-ninth. Section two, the ordinance shall take effect and be enforced and after its passage.
Alderman Mitchell.
I move passes in the omnibus.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Moving to the omnibus, Alderman Mitchell.
Madam President, I move that matters in the omnibus be passed by the affirmative vote of all members present for the roll call to determine quorum.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Alderman Thompson. Alderman Thompson on the motion for reconsideration. You tricked me.
Thank you, Madam President. I move that we reconsider the vote.
All those in favor of reconsidering, reconsideration on the previous matter signify by saying aye. All those opposed, say nay. The nays have it. The motion, motion for reconsideration fails. Alderman Mitchell.
Madam President, there being no further business before the body, I move that we adjourn by the affirmative vote of all the members present for the roll call to determine quorum.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. This matter, this meeting is adjourned.